Thank you for joining us, everybody. We're working on a couple of technicalities here.
Okay, there we go.
Will be started very soon.
Okay. It's now up.
I believe that we did do a sound check with Johanna?
Yes, we did.
Okay. I was paying attention for that one.
We are ready, Chair.
All right, thank you very much. Happy New Year, everybody. Today is January 4th, 2022, our first regular board meeting for the Lake County Board of Supervisors for the 2022 calendar year. And we are going to start this with a moment of silence, just going to check with other board members. Is there a moment of silence from other board members? I have one. So, um, a close friend of mine, and also a very active community member in our community, Bob Hopkins, passed away over the weekend. I want to hold a moment of silence for him. He is a veteran, has continuously helped with the Vet Connects and the Stand Downs, and has done much to help out our veterans in our community. He helped rebirth Glory Days Flag Football, that many adults had experience of having an adult football league to have access. He volunteered over at the Senior Center and was always active in doing whatever he could to bring sports and help in the community. He was also helping out with the intramural sports in Conacta Unified School District, doing the flag football games with the kids. He will be missed by all who knew him, the community who has lost an important member. And we will hold him and his family in our thoughts today. And I don't remember where I was in my cycle, but since it's the first of the year, District One Supervisor, Supervisor Seven, would you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
A pledge allegiance to the flag, to the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all. Item number, I feel like I'm in a tunnel. My voice sounds very strange today, maybe it's my ears more so than anything. Item number four, consideration of extra items. Are there any extra items from staff, board members? Seeing none, let's go ahead and, that seems a little bit better, thank you. Let's move on to the approval of the consent agenda. I do have some items that I will be pulling for further discussion, and that is item 5.3, 5.4, 5.6, and I apologize because I do have one more, and that will be 5.10. Anyone else? All right, and let's see if anybody in the public wishes to pull an item from the consent agenda. And seeing none in the Zoom room, and again, dial *9 if you're here on telephone, or press the button at the bottom of your screen to raise your hand. And seeing none, let's go ahead and bring it back to the board for action other than those items pulled.
Mr. Chair, I will motion to approve consent agenda items 5.1, 5.2, 5.5, 5.7 through 5.9, 5.11 through 5.14.
Second.
You have a motion from Supervisor Crandall, and a second by Supervisor Scott. Roll call, Johanna, good morning.
Good morning, Supervisor Simon.
Yes.
Supervisor Crandall.
Aye.
Supervisor Scott.
Aye.
Supervisor Pisca.
Yes.
And Supervisor Sabatia.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, and we'll go ahead and let the new chair take up those items when we get there. It's already 9:08, so we'll go ahead and continue with our timed items. 9:05 a.m., public input, this is for anything not on our agenda. If you wish to express yourself, you have three minutes. Again, if it's on the agenda, wait, and we will have public comment. Anybody in the boardroom have a comment? Go ahead and come to the microphone. Give us your name, and you have three minutes. And if you're in a Zoom room, raise your hand, and we will call on you.
My name is Justin Coyle. I'm still trying to get into the cannabis program. I'm trying to figure out how we can work on getting, I understand you guys got a new people in there in charge, but some of us are getting overlooked on stuff that is not, how do I explain it? How do we get somebody to look over things that are getting passed and dropped through holes? People that are willing to not sue the county, not go through those processes, and try to get a license when we're finding out files? And I'm talking to people and trying to point out there's a lot of mistakes that the county has made, and I make mistakes in life too, but let's work together in trying to get projects through that are good for the program. If we make these mistakes, maybe these people need to be held accountable for what they did make mistakes on. I've talked to numerous of you, two people here, but I've also talked to a lot of other people, and people are saying that these mistakes have happened. And even the CEO here has told people that I'm, I lie, and I'm not lying. These mistakes have happened. And all I want is a license or the chance to get to the board. You know, these mistakes are happening over and over again. He's sending out letters now to the wrong neighborhoods for my project, for my meeting that's supposed to happen that I've been promised three times. And then right before the meeting, two days before the meeting, I had people coming from LA and other areas. The last meeting was supposed to be guaranteed. And we had people come from all over, and the day before I get told, I mean, I don't know, you know, you want people to come and support families and projects that are good, but you got to keep your word too. Is there any kind of projects, or maybe we should start a new program where I get a group on Facebook and we come in and inspect our workers and their paperwork? I have a lot of ADA issues. I try to watch you guys online, but I'm blocked on one of them from commenting anything. You know, I can't see who's talking, even when you do it online. Now, I've noticed other counties, they have lights that come on. I'm not going to suggest what counties, but you should look into it. When you guys do talk with these masks, now that we're going to be permanently with them, not temporary anymore, ADA laws need to be upheld, and people need to be able to see who's talking. You can see me talking, I'm here. I don't know, there's a lot of frustration there, and there's my timer, I'm out. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Anyone else in the board chambers? Please come on up.
My name is Rayo Lee, I live in Riviera West. I'll be very brief. First of all, I'd like to know what is accomplished by anybody coming here and standing up in front of the board and asking for help. I started seven months ago, and I haven't received one word from anybody on this board or from anybody in the county. We've attempted the subject matter, we attempted to discover originally who in the heck is running and taking care of this lake. There's no central point. The committees are independent, and the building are independent, and in the state, feds, I mean, it's all over the block, and nobody seems to be responsible. And nobody seems to want to belly up to the bar and talk about that or do anything about it. I pointed out that the major committee that I went to, the Blue Ribbon Committee that I tried to talk at, they wrote back to me and said, you're right, there is nobody in charge. There's no central point. When, as an example, the sediment in the lake is going to have mercury in it, nobody's ever going to be able to remove it. It's impossible to remove it from the lake, given the technologies that we have available to us. Two, the federal government a year ago told Lake County that they're going to go ahead to the Superfund site, and they're going to attempt to stop the flow of the mercury into the lake. And there's some other sediment, but that's the major one. And what they were going to do was build a dam, and then they're going to round the sites, and then they're digging all the earth out, and they're going to put new work in, they're going to put caps on the earth that they dug out, and then they're going to cover all of that over and plant on top of it. That's supposed to stop it. No, there's a lot of doubt about that. However, nobody talks about that. Nobody says a thing about that. However, it'll only take another four to five years before they're able to start with it, and what happens in the intervening time? Nobody is, that I've been able to find has even talked about Robinson Slough, which finally got some water in it, but there's an awful lot of particulates in that water. Why? Because it dried out, because the particulates went into the ground, the water comes, lifts them up just like on a roadway, and it's loaded with them. So if nobody can tell us how much the birds are going to be damaged, how much the fish are going to be damaged, nobody can tell us that. And yet we have committees running around that are supposed to represent the board, me, the rest of the community, and they're all individuals. There's no coordination for anybody. So again, I ask, I submitted a document, asked for help on it. I raised some of the same issues that I've just talked about, and I've never heard anything back, I've never seen anything printed, I've never been notified of anything.
And sir, if you can get to your final comment?
Yes, my final comment is, when does this board respond to somebody who comes here on their own time and raises some issues? When does the county or the board respond to that person? No answer.
And at this point in time, in public comment, there is no question and response. Reach out to your supervisor, that is the best advice that I can provide.
I've been coming here since.
And sir, your three minutes are up. If you want to wait till after the meeting to have further discussion, let's do so.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Seeing no further hands up, let's go ahead and go to the Zoom room. We have Carlos Bono.
Good morning, Board of Supervisors. Good morning, Lake County. I'd like to start with the VAERS data. The latest VAERS data indicates 21,002 deaths directly related to vaccine injury. I'm going to make this brief. There's 35,650 permanently disabled people and 23,892 life-threatening events. This is all related to COVID and the vaccinations that have not gotten informed consent. And the latest news is that there's a 40% increase in people in Indiana, a life insurance CAO said deaths are up 40% among people ages 18 to 64. The One America Life Insurance Company CEO said this over the past few days. Now, I want to, I want to just read the Nuremberg Code on Consent. At any rate, "Any prevention, diagnostic, and therapeutic medical intervention is only to be carried out with the prior free and informed consent of the person concerned. Based on adequate information, the consent should, where appropriate, be expressed and be withdrawn by the person at any time and for any reason without disadvantage or prejudice." I want to reiterate that everyone that has taken a COVID vaccine is an experimental subject. This is how you are considered by the drug companies. This is what you are, you are a test subject, you are an experiment. The people that have not gotten vaccinated are the control group, so they want to compare what happens with the control group and the vaccinated population. I want to stress that backing these poison, supposedly vaccines, is really is counterproductive to the county, to everyone involved, and especially to children and young people who are absolutely at no risk of getting COVID. Even if they get COVID, the side effects are much more, they're much more serious than the disease itself. So I would just want to, want to stress that our county board and the people representing us in the county should be aware of these facts, and they should take action to stop these illegal and unconstitutional mandates. At any rate, that's all I have to say, thank you very much.
Thank you for your comment. Next is phone 4627.
Good morning, this is Tom Slate. I have a few comments. I'm going to read these this time, and absolutely, this is my perspective, I'm emphasizing that. I have some thoughts to share regarding your comments, Supervisor Sabatia, on December 21st, after five people, including me spoke during the COVID update. Clearly, you were displeased. About 30 years ago, Noam Chomsky said something like, "The emperor may not have any clothes, but the emperor doesn't like being reminded of it." And it reminded me of that. So you have expressed your displeasure at people's sincere, respectful comments. Responsible concern Lake County residents who took the time and made the effort to participate in a Lake County Board of Supervisor meeting and to share their concerns, their thoughts, and perhaps even life-saving information. Apparently, there's a misunderstanding on your part, I will explain. The people of Lake County, or people anywhere, are not here to please you or any board member. I will not bring to your attention Resolution 200761, a resolution establishing a code of conduct and ethics for members of the Board of Supervisors. From the resolution, we are dedicated to the highest ideals of honor, integrity in public and personal relationships in order to merit the respect and confidence of the board, avoid the appearance of impropriety, serve as a model of leadership and civility to the community, inspire confidence in Lake County government. Board members will be respectful of diverse opinions. Board members are role models for residents, businesspeople, and other stakeholders involved in public debate. Meaningful involvement of the public, treat others with respect to maintain public confidence. There's more, but I will move on. I have not reviewed the Brown Act recently, but I recall it reading something like, "We do not yield our sovereignty to you." Quiet and reserved dignity, I think, garners respect where maturity prevails. Blurted out sophomoric, defensive, essentially ad hominem, straw man, non-circuits, in my opinion, bullying might be impressive to children and adolescents, but probably not to adults. It is not only inappropriate, and for me, embarrassing, it is, I can't read my own writing, it is what, if we are to, here we are, if we were to conduct ourselves as adults, it is unacceptable, and it needs to stop. And if we all, if we all follow those ethics resolutions and guidelines for civility to each other, I think it will stop. So, thank you, that's all I have.
Thank you for your comment. Next is Julia Bono.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Hi, okay, my name is Reverend Julia Bono. I'm a church minister and author of a book on ethics. Today, I wish to address the fact that compulsory vaccination and medical mandates violate basic human rights and medical ethics. Basic human rights have been established and codified by international treaties that precedent override any national, state, county, city, or local laws and ordinances. Actions taken by governments or individuals contrary to these basic rights are considered crimes against humanity. Compulsory vaccination and medical mandates stand in direct violation of basic human rights as laid out in these international standards. First of all, the Nuremberg Code, as we've previously heard, UNESCO's Universal Declaration on Bioethics and Human Rights, Article 6, the UN International Covenant on Civil and Political Rights, Article 7, and the UN Universal Declaration of Human Rights, Article 3. Compulsory vaccination and medical mandates are therefore crimes against humanity and should be prosecuted as such. Furthermore, medical mandates and compulsory vaccination are illegal and unethical. The UNESCO Universal Declaration on Bioethics and Human Rights states in Article 6 that "Any preventative, diagnostic, and therapeutic medical intervention is only to be carried out with the prior free and informed consent of the person concerned based on adequate information." This means medical mandates of any type are both illegal and unethical since they attempt to override a person's right to provide their fully informed and free prior consent to a medical procedure. With respect to compulsory vaccination, it is unethical for medical practitioners to engage in, according to the World Medical Association, its International Code of Medical Ethics, which states that physicians shall respect a competent patient's right to accept or refuse treatment. It's also against the General Pharmaceutical Council's policy on consent, which states in Section 1.2 that people have a basic right to be involved in decisions about their health care. It's also breach of the Medical Protection Society guidelines. It's also contrary to various governments' principles of consent for immunization. Compulsory vaccination is therefore unethical and illegal for governments to attempt to mandate or enforce, and for medical professions to engage in. All of the COVID-19 vaccines are of recent invention, should therefore be considered experimental until long-term, human, clinical, and even multi-generational trials have been completed, notwithstanding any approvals given by the FDA or other US government agencies. Furthermore, any drugs used to develop or used or developed to treat or prevent COVID-19 should also be considered experimental. The testing on human subjects of an experimental vaccine or drug without their fully informed consent is unethical, according to the World Medical Association's Declaration of Helsinki, Articles 25 to 30. Any physician must also fully inform their patient about the aspects of their care that are related to research being done on vaccines, experimental drugs, or treatments. Furthermore, Article 31 of that declaration states that "The refusal of a patient to participate in such research should never adversely affect the patient-physician relationship." This means your physician cannot make vaccination a compulsory condition of your continued treatment by them. In conclusion, I wish to warn the board and those listening that it is illegal and unethical to impose medical mandates on the residents of this county.
If you can get to your last comment?
That was it.
All right.
If you, if you wanted, I'll repeat it, since you spoke over it.
Go ahead and say your final comment.
In conclusion, I wish to warn the board and those listening that it is illegal and unethical to impose medical mandates on the residents of this county. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I've just been alerted by our technical team that there seems to be a potential issue, we need to do a reset, and so we're going to go ahead and take a three minutes. We'll go ahead and take a three-minute break, we will reconvene at 9:28. We're past our 9:28, and we're good to go? Okay, and I apologize for the lag, wanted to make sure that our technology was working appropriately for everybody. And we will continue with public comment. Oh, I had some hands up, let's go ahead and give you a chance to put your hands back up, because we were not done with public comment.
Oh no, I didn't mean to do that, sorry.
I was going to call on you. Let me see if I'm just not seeing the hands. Who had their hand up? So what I would ask, because of the strange break that we took, is that the new chair, it's up to the new chair, that maybe we reopen public comment to make sure that they have the chance to speak. I did not mean to cut them off and make them feel that they were not able to provide public comment, I want to make sure public comment is available, but again, up to the new chair. We do have a hand up, phone 1113. Who was the other one?
Okay, hi, this is Dr. Will Tuttle, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, yeah, I was just in silence for a long time. So, yeah, I'm calling regarding the county's response by the supervisors and by the Health Director of the COVID pandemic. And as we heard earlier from somebody, there's this new, very large insurance company, and he says that it's all the insurance companies basically throughout the United States are showing a 40% increase in deaths among 18 to 64-year-old people. This is absolutely unprecedented. It would be a once-in-every-200-year event to have a 10% increase in the death rate, and this is a 40% increase, so something is killing a lot of people, it's not COVID. And, because those rates are way down. And so, there's also just been released from Germany, a very eminent German pathologist named Dr. Arne Burkhardt. He has examined the remains of 15 people who died following the so-called inject, the vaccine injections. And 14 out of those 15, he found, were definitely deaths or due to the injections. They were, the body was attacking its own organs, these, all these deaths, of course, they were not attributed to the vaccines, as they never are. And so, he found that 14 of the 15 actually were caused because they had extensive autoimmune attacks on their own organs that were triggered by the COVID injections. And an eminent German scientist has said, following this, this is a quote, that the conclusion is that essentially every inoculant recipient suffers damage, with more damage after each shot. Given the seriousness of the types of damage, autoimmune disease, cancer, reemergent dormant infections, clotting, strokes, cardiac damage, et cetera, these effects will translate into lifespan reduction, which should be counted as deaths from the inoculation. So in the USA, where about 200 million people have been fully inoculated, the number of deaths will not be the 10,000 or so, of course, it's up to 20,000 reported in VAERS, but could be closer to tens of millions when the inoculation place itself out. So I think we have to realize that this is an unprecedented attack on humanity that's being covered up very obviously by the mainstream media, by governmental organizations, for some reason. And it seems that the corruption is so deep here that it's very difficult for justice to be served. And I guess I just remind everybody, myself included, that all of us will face accountability for our actions after we leave this body, and I think that's probably the most important thing to be aware of. We have people on the board who are from the Native American tradition, we have women, and a trillion indigenous people.
And your three minutes are up, if you'd like to make your final comment?
And also children are suffering terribly, so just to keep this in mind, thank you very much.
Thank you very much. All right, I see no further hands up, and the other person that did have the hands up was Michael Cole Bruno, I know that he did, I believe emailed all of us, and so if that was the message, it's definitely been received, but just wanted to at least let you all aware that that was the other hand that is not coming back up. So we're going to go ahead and move on from our 9:05 a.m., and move on to our, strangely enough, 9:01 a.m. I guess I should have done that first, my bad. Election of Chair of the Board of Supervisors and Vice Chair of the Board of Supervisors for 2022. I would like to first thank the board for the opportunity to be the chair for the entire fiscal year of, calendar year of 2021. It was definitely an honor. And in doing so, I would like to actually pass the gavel right now to my neighbor, Supervisor Simon, so that I may be able to make a motion to de-seed myself and request for a nomination, rather than wait for the board to make the nomination for me. And so, I just want to open up the nomination, and then we can open it up for discussion, but I'd like to nominate Vice Chair Crandall as the next chair of the Board of Supervisors for 2022, with Supervisor Scott as the Vice Chair for 2022. Opening it up for discussion.
Okay, so I'm the chair now.
At this moment in time, yes.
Thank you very much. Excellent, there was, I wasn't prepared for that, Bruno.
I was just, I, I was humbled by the opportunity, and I'm humbled by stepping down and giving someone else the opportunity, and rather than waiting for someone else to make that happen, I want to make that happen on my own.
Okay, all right, there's a motion and a second. So, at this point, we need to have public comment? Or board comment first? Apologize?
I don't know that there's public comment on this or not, but it looks like we're getting a yes.
Yes, on everything. Yes, so, any comment from the board? Excellent, we'll go ahead and open it up to public comment. We'll go ahead and open it up to public comment. Any comment in the room? And I don't have Zoom open, so.
No comments on Zoom.
I don't see any. Okay, hearing none, hearing no public comment. We'll go ahead and bring it back to the board for action.
And motion stands.
Second. Second.
Oh, I apologize, I didn't ask for a second. All right. Johanna?
Okay. Um, let me see if I can get the order right. So Supervisor, uh, Supervisor Sabatier?
Aye.
Supervisor Crandall?
I guess I'll abstain?
Say yes.
Okay. Supervisor Scott?
Aye.
Supervisor Pyska?
Yes.
And Supervisor Simon?
Yes.
Thank you.
It was funny to watch Anita go, no.
Congratulations.
All right, so I guess we.
Are we gonna take a five-minute break? Would you like a five-minute break?
Thirty seconds.
Thirty seconds, all right, let's take a 30-second break. Be back in just a minute, we gotta move some chairs around.
All right.
Did you clean out your snack tray?
It never changed from when it was before.
But you're leaving it for me?
Yes, there's some goodies from 2020.
I'm glad you didn't switch the chair, because I like your chair.
Nice.
And then I'll grab the coffee.
Thank you. Thought I had two.
Oh, yeah.
I'll just take the name, and I'll take Tina's plate. You can pass that on to Tina.
Oh, yeah.
Or I'll pass that on to Tina.
Okay, so. All right, excellent. Are you ready, Sam? Okay, you're good. All right. Our 9:02 item is sitting as the Lake County Board of Equalization election of Chair and Vice Chair of the Lake County Board of Equalization for 2022. And so I assume that's the same motion and, or the same people, right?
I'm ready to make a motion when, when you are Chair.
Okay. I'll open it up for public input. Is there anybody on Zoom that wants to, that has a comment? Hearing none, bring it back to the board for action.
I move to elect Chair Crandall and Vice Chair Scott of the Lake County Local Board of Equalization for 2022.
Second.
So I have a motion and a second. Johanna, can you conduct the roll call, please?
Okay, Supervisor Simon?
Yes.
Supervisor Sabatier?
Aye.
Supervisor Scott?
Aye.
Supervisor Pyska?
Yes.
And Supervisor Crandall?
Aye. All right, motion carries unanimously. Item 6.4, our 9:03 a.m., sitting as the Lake County In-Home Supportive Services. Election of Chair and Vice Chair of the Lake County In-Home Supportive Services Public Authority Board of Directors for 2022. And it's the same action in essence, so we'll go ahead and open it up for public input, if there is any. Not seeing anybody on Zoom. Bring it back to the board for action. Mr. Chair, I will move to appoint Supervisor Crandall as Chair and Supervisor Scott as Vice Chair to the Lake County In-Home Supportive Services Public Authority Board of Directors for 2022.
Second.
Motion by Supervisor Simon, second by Supervisor Pyska. Johanna, can you please conduct the roll call, please?
Okay, Supervisor Simon?
Aye.
Supervisor Sabatier?
Aye.
Supervisor Scott?
Aye.
Supervisor Pyska?
Yes.
And Supervisor Crandall?
Yes.
Thank you.
So we will now move back to our consent agenda items that were pulled. Do we need time for that?
Well, I believe Director Metcalf is here if you wanted to take up the behavioral health item, so I wanted to ask you if you could give me a time approximate for when you might get to 5.10, so I can make sure community development staff can be here for that.
I was going to just go straight down.
I believe that they are.
Are they, or in the Zoom?
No, they're here in the boardroom.
Oh, excuse me. Okay. All right, we're good then.
All right, so we'll start with 5.3. And let me go to it so I can read it off. 5.3, Approve Agreement Between County of Lake and Redwood Community Services, Inc. for the MHSA Traditional Youth Drop-In Center Program Expansion for Fiscal Year 21 and 22. Director Metcalf, if you're present, the floor is yours.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. Congratulations on your new appointment and other members of the board. So this item, 5.3, is also similar to item 5.6, that was also pulled earlier this morning. These, well, this one in particular, 5.3, is in response to our Mental Health Services Act three-year plan, where it's documented in the three-year plan that this particular program, the Harbor-on-Maine, which is one of our peer support centers that we contract with Redwood Community Services to operate, is taking advantage of some extra funds that were available in the Mental Health Services Act. And this was approved by your board last year, the three-year plan update. And I know we sent, we probably sent too much information as attachments to this item. And in hindsight, we probably should have referenced the particular page numbers in some of these documents, because I know there's a lot of reading. But I, I believe our administrative deputy director is also here in the meeting. She might want to add more to this. She oversees our Mental Health Services Act programs, and she might be able to articulate a little bit more about where this came from, but it's, they are funds that were made available and now in response to Redwood Community Services' request for program expansion, but that's pretty much what this is all about. But Elise, I don't know if you wanted to add a little bit more to that?
Sure, I'd be happy to. Good morning, your board. So this item, 5.3, to provide expansion of the TAY Drop-In Center, the Harbor-on-Maine, actually, this wasn't, this program and then also item 5.6, were not the only two programs that receive programmatic expansion dollars through MHSA. Motherwise is also another program that's supported in part by MHSA and had also, there was an application process, if you will, to access these programmatic expansion dollars where programs had to say how the funding would support them in further developing the program, and they were reviewed and awarded based on merit. And so the, these are, I just want to point out that these aren't the only two programs that received these expansion dollars.
Thank you, Mrs. Jones. Director Metcalf, do you have anything else to add, or?
I just didn't know if you had any, any, any particular questions about, about this item that we'll do our best to answer, but I hope, I hope that helped clear it up a little bit.
Is there anyone from the board that has any comments or questions? Supervisor Sabatier?
Thank you very much. So the reason that I pulled this is if you open up the agreement on page seven of the PDF where it says "Description of Services," there is no description of services in all contracts. That's what I usually go to, to figure out why are we doing this in the first place. And this one says, "Contractor shall utilize the supplemental program expansion funding for the existing program at the facility." And the facility is just giving us an address, but it doesn't give us the program. I appreciate what's brought here, I don't want to stop what's brought here, but what I would like to add to the 4.1 under "Description of Services" is the words, and I'm gonna say the same thing for 5.6. Existing program exists under agreement approved by the Lake County Board of Supervisors on April 27, 2021, titled Agreement Between County of Lake and Redwood Community Services, Inc. for the MHSA Transitional Age Youth TAY Drop-In Center for Fiscal Year 2021/22. In that agreement, there's a huge list of what the scope of services looks like. That way, there was, I had to do a lot of research to even find what that contract was. If this is embedded in the agreement, then it's easy for the public to find, it's easy for us to find, but at this moment in time, we have money being offered, but it's hard for me to know exactly what those services are, when in the description of services, it just says that there's another program happening. I think there needs to be a more direct link, so I'm looking to create that direct link. If we can add that language today and approve it today, I would be happy. I do not want to stop this. I just want to make it easier for the public and for us to be able to make sure that we connect it to the program that's already in existence. This is an expansion to a program that exists, but I see no connection to the program we are expanding specifically. It just says it's expanding a program.
Thank you, Supervisor Sabatier. Director, is there anyone else from the board that has a question or comment? Director Metcalf, did you have anything to say about the Supervisor Sabatier's concerns?
No, I, it makes total sense. I guess we just sort of made an assumption that this is, this is in addition to an existing agreement, so we will take that, that verbiage, that language, and insert it in 4.1 in this agreement.
All right, thank you for that. So I'll open it up for public input. It looks like we have somebody in the room that would like to come and speak. If you come to the microphone and you have three minutes to speak, state your name for the record as well, please.
I am Joan Moss. I have Mr. Metcalf on the line, and I have you right in front of me, so I'm asking about a statement I heard from someone who's on the street, and that is that the people who run the harbor last week in the middle of a snowstorm said that they cannot allow senior homeless people into the harbor. They can only allow teenagers. I didn't check that out with the person who runs the harbor, but I want you to clarify whether that is the policy. And apparently, there were homeless people freezing and hungry outside the harbor who were not teenagers.
I'd like to offer a point of order. This is about transitional age youth. I think this is a different topic than what we're discussing right now in this agreement.
This is policy at the harbor. That's what I'm asking, about the policy of the harbor. And it happened during the snowstorm last week. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Moss. Director Metcalf, do you, do you think you can connect with Mrs. Moss offline and discuss what she's concerned about?
Absolutely. And I had also invited someone from Redwood Community Services to, to participate in today's meeting. I don't know if she's here, if she would want to say anything about that, but as Supervisor Sabatier pointed out, that particular facility is designed and geared towards the transitional age youth demographic. But I can, Joan, I can certainly connect with you offline about this.
Thank you. Thank you. And without further ado, if there's not anything else from staff, we'll go ahead and bring it back to board for action. Supervisor Sabatier?
Yes, I just have a quick question. Just wanted to check in with Ms. Grant. The language that I provided, is that good enough just to make that connection? Again, it's, existing program exists under agreement approved by the Lake County Board of Supervisors on April 27, 2021, titled, and then I copied the exact title of what that agreement was.
It's simply clarifying language, so that can be added on its face if your board approves the contract as amended, as described by Supervisor Sabatier.
Thank you, I just needed to check in before we made changes that were potentially invalid. So I moved to approve the agreement with Redwood Community Services for Transitional Age Youth Drop-In Center expansion with the amendments offered.
Excuse me, Mr. Chair of IMA?
Yes.
I do see that Redwood Community Services has already signed, so behavioral health will have to be directed.
I think that your microphone is off.
I see that Redwood Community Services is already signed, so I would recommend that you direct Behavioral Health Services to go back to Redwood Community and have them initial the change, the additional clarification that's offered in 4.1.
And I amend my motion to add that direction to staff.
Motion by Supervisor Sabatier?
Second.
Second by Supervisor Simon.
Mr. Chair, we also have a representative from Redwood Community Services in the Zoom room, if she wishes to speak. Her name is Victoria Kelly.
Okay, I'll hold the action for a second. Victoria, would you, would you like to state anything?
Good morning, board. I would just like to, you know, thank Lake County Behavioral Health. We've been working on these contracts, and they've gone back and forth, and we are all very excited to receive the dollars to have some expansion within the harbor and the NEST program, adding playgrounds, adding some recording studio option for, for youth, and some computers and whatnot, so all that is also detailed. But I do just want to quickly address what the public comment spoke about around adults and the other people experiencing.
Mrs. Kelly, we just asked that maybe if you can conduct that offline. Director Metcalf can get in touch with, with Mrs. Moss, and then you can touch base with her and get her the question she answered, so thank you.
Thank you.
And so we'll bring it back to board. Thank you, Mrs. Kelly. And bringing it back to the board, there's, there's been a motion and a second. Johanna, can you conduct the roll call, please?
Okay, Supervisor Simon?
Yes.
Supervisor Sabatier?
Aye.
Supervisor Scott?
Aye.
Supervisor Pyska?
Yes.
And Supervisor Crandall?
Aye.
Thank you.
So now we'll move on to 5.4, Approve Amendment Number One to the Agreement Between the County of Lake Behavioral Health Services as Lead Agency for the Lake County Continuum of Care and Elijah House Foundation for Services Funded Under the Emergency Solutions Grant Coronavirus Program for Fiscal Year 2021 and 2022. Director Metcalf, I see you're still on, so if you can, you have the floor?
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chair. As you may recall, we presented this to your board last month, I believe it was the last meeting of the, of the calendar year, to make some minor adjustments. It wasn't clear where these services were being provided, and then there was also a slight error on the, the end, the end of the term date of the agreement. And so this amendment brings those, those forward. However, as, as we continued to read through the language of the contract, somehow, language around liability had been dropped. It was in the initial agreement with Elijah House, but for some reason, it did not carry over into this agreement. And Supervisor Sabatier, and I went a little bit back and forth on this, and Supervisor Sabatier, I'm sort of asking you for some guidance here, how, how we could move this forward. I would hate for this to move, move again to another meeting. I'd really like to get this approved, but without that, that liability language, I too am a little uncomfortable about it, but I guess I look to you, Chair Sabatier, or Supervisor Sabatier, sorry, and County Council for some, some direction here, please.
Anita, if you have, if you'd like to say something?
If your board wants to do this, since the, since the signature on this item is, you'd authorize Todd Metcalf, I'm happy to work with him to add the standard contract liability language here as an element of this.
So that we could pass it today. Supervisor Sabatier?
And so what I did is, I have exactly what I think is needed, that was approved on April 1st. There was liability language already embedded in there, and I think it's as simple as taking that off and putting it onto this one. I'd like to share my screen to see if that's something that interests the board and gets the approval of Ms. Grant. I did have a conversation with Ms. Grant yesterday about this as well. And so let me see if I can zoom this, because it's quite tiny. So in Exhibit A, Scope of Services, there's already nine current scope of services on the agreement that we're amending, and so we would be adding 1.10, which says, facility maintenance responsibilities. And so we would be adding 1.10, which says facility maintenance responsibilities. I can't seem to see everything. Contractors shall be responsible for routine maintenance at the facility and general upkeep. Contractors shall be responsible for basic lawn maintenance. Contractors shall not use the facility and/or the facility grounds for any purposes not related to the provision of services as described herein. 111, cost of utilities, the cost of utilities, water, sewer, and electricity shall be paid by contractor. 112, damages, any damage to the facility or the facility grounds shall be promptly reported by the contractor to LCBH. 113, alterations, no alteration shall be made to the facility or the grounds of the facility by contractor unless written permission is obtained and received in advance from the county. County responsibilities. This would add Item 6. It ends on Exhibit A with Items 5. So this would add county responsibilities, use of county facilities. County shall provide a portion of the county-owned premises known as the Lake County Juvenile Hall for the use of the COVID-19 Temporary Emergency Housing Hub described herein. The portion of the premises subject to said use are more particularly described in Exhibit F. In the original, in the original agreement that we did with Elijah House, there was an exhibit. We can just copy and paste that on there. It just shows the Juvenile Hall attached here too and incorporated herein by reference. Maintenance, repair, and replacement, the county shall be responsible for the maintenance, repair, and when applicable, the replacement of all infrastructure of the facility and facility grounds. This includes but is not limited to plumbing, electrical, and sewer. Grounds shall be maintained but not renovated or disturbed by contractor only other than routine maintenance and weed control. That was the original stuff that were, the original portions of the building maintenance and building responsibilities that was on the April 1st, oh, sorry, June 27, 2020, original agreement with Elijah House. All I did was copy those from that agreement, moving it onto this, thinking that if it was approved and it passed the smell test back then, that it would pass the test today. It doesn't have indemnification or anything of the kind, neither did it have that before. But I think that today I would like to pass it with this and then maybe ask for Ms. Grant to continue working with Director Metcalf to get some indemnification involved because that was not on the previous agreement at all.
Ms. Grant?
And we do have standard indemnification provisions that could be employed here with just some minor tweaks given the nature of the agreement. But we're, we're happy to do that. It won't deviate from anything the board's previously approved. But we're happy to add that language into this agreement if, if your board determines to approve it today for Mr. Metcalf's signature as indicated.
And so again, just to finish, none of this is created by me. This is only copying the original agreement, which then this fell off of the now April 1, 2021 agreement that was begun earlier last year.
Good catch. Thank you. Director Metcalf, does this seem amenable to you?
Oh, absolutely. Thank you. Thank you for the direction. And Ms. Grant, you and I can connect after this and we'll, we'll incorporate the suggested language.
All right. Anything else from the board supervisors? I'm not seeing any, anything from the public. Let me see if we can get back to...
I take down the share.
Yeah, take down the share if you can.
Oh, so sorry. Looked good on my screen.
I'm not seeing anyone in, on Zoom, and so I see someone in the room. Can you please come up to the mic and state your name for the record? Yes. And if we can ensure it's involving the Elijah House Foundation, the item on the agenda.
Yes. Joan Moss, I just have a quick question. I understood Elijah House was a shelter for the homeless originally. Now, it looks, I, I haven't looked at all the accompanying materials, but I want to know if a person who is going to stay at Elijah House has got to be under quarantine or has got to have COVID in order to stay there. That's what I wanted to know.
She's referencing a different program. The SSTU program is the one that quarantines people that have no location to quarantine. She could call Lake County Public Health and ask questions about that program.
And so if there's anyone from that department, if you can reach out to Mrs. Moss. And if there's anyone from the Behavioral Health Department that has anything to add to that, if you could reach out to her offline and touch base with her and get the answer that she requires. Okay. Is there anyone else with public input? Not seeing any hands in the room and/or on Zoom. So I'll bring you back to the board for action and deliberation.
I move to approve the amended agreement with amendments shown in the share screen with direction to staff to work with Ms. Grant on the indemnification clause.
Second.
So I have a motion by Supervisor Sabatier, second by Supervisor Scott. And Johanna, can you please conduct the roll call?
Okay, Supervisor Simon?
Aye.
Yes.
Supervisor Sabatier?
Aye.
Supervisor Scott?
Aye.
Supervisor Pyska?
Yes.
And Supervisor Crandall?
Aye.
Thank you.
And we will now move on to Item 5.6, Approve Agreement Between County of Lake and Redwood Community Services Incorporated for the MHSA Lake County Family Stabilization Program Expansion for Fiscal Year 2021 and 22. Looks as if we had somewhat covered a lot of this on 5.3, but if there's anything else to add, we'll go ahead and Supervisor Sabatier, go ahead.
And so again, on the description of services, it just pointed to an existing program without providing any specific link. I'd just like to add the language existing program exists under agreement approved by the Lake County Board of Supervisors on April 27, 2021, titled Agreement Between County of Lake and Redwood Community Services, Inc. for the MHSA Lake County Family Stabilization Program for Fiscal Year 21, 22.
All right. Anything else to add from the board? No, if there's not, we'll open it up for public input. Not seeing anyone in the Zoom room or in the board chambers, and so we'll bring it back for deliberation.
I move to approve the agreement with Redwood Community Services for the Lake County Family Stabilization Program Expansion with amendments as noted.
Second.
So I have a motion by Supervisor Sabatier, second by Supervisor Simon. Johanna, please conduct the roll call.
Okay, Supervisor Simon?
Aye.
Supervisor Sabatier?
Aye.
Supervisor Scott?
Aye.
Supervisor Pyska?
Yes.
And Supervisor Crandall?
Yes.
Thank you.
With that, we'll move on to Item 5.10, which is the second reading of Ordinance Amending Section 21-3.7 of Chapter 21 of the Ordinance Code of the County of Lake by adopting a sectional district zoning map number 3.7 B 1.405. Community Development, is there anyone here from Community Development? Looks like we have somebody, but did you want to come to the front and? Yeah, you can come forward.
And Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Is it possible for me to express my concern so that we don't rehash the entirety of the items? Since this is a second reading?
Yes, and if you'd like, you can come sit up, yes. Thank you. Go ahead Supervisor Sabatier.
So the reason that I pulled this is unfortunately, it was a bit of a late night thought process, thinking, well, this is a second reading. I've already been through this. Well, let's, let's review it again one last time. And in reviewing it, we're changing an entire two acre. If you look at the ordinance, it states that we are going to change two parcels from a big A agriculture zone to M2. Doesn't show that it's going to be a split zone where it's going to be A/M2, but yet it talks about seven acres out of the total, I don't know how many acres, but it's like 50 acres total or more between the two properties that we're discussing, where a portion of each of those two properties is going to be potentially developed in industrial style. Since we're only changing the parcels that exist, I have problems with that because when I, when I review M2, and, and the entirety of the parcels is going to be changed to M2, but yet it says all other areas of project parcels outside of the seven plus acres will continue to have a land use zoning designation of A. But that's not what we're agreeing to in the proposed zoning designation. It changes it to M2. At least that's the way that I read it. And when you look up M2, agriculture is not an allowable use in M2, and yet that whole property is vineyards. And I'm very concerned about the non-conformity that we're creating within that property. If it was, we're splitting it into a new parcel and we're turning that seven acre into M2, all for that, 100% that makes sense. But to change both of the entirety of those properties into an M2, when there's vineyards on the majority of one of those parcels, doesn't make sense to me any longer when I review it in that case. So I'm, I'm concerned that it doesn't, it talks about somewhat split zoning on top, but the proposed zoning designation does not propose split zoning. And so I'd like to get a better understanding of what is being approved here and how does it affect the rest of the land use that doesn't seem to conform with the new designation that we're going to be approving if this moves forward today.
Okay, Ms. Ham, do you think you have an answer?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Good morning.
Good morning.
Supervisors. Okay, so it's actually one legal parcel. It's actually not two parcels, but for some reason it's, it was a voluntary merger, so it's one legal parcel. There is only seven, seven acres of that whole parcel is going to be M2, and the rest is going to be ag. So it is a split zone, and a split zone is actually pretty common in Lake County. And yeah.
So my question is, in, in the ordinance that we're approving, it says current zoning designation is A.
Yes.
Proposed is M2. If it said A/M2, then I would agree with you that we're doing split zoning, but it doesn't look to me like we're approving split zoning. And I'm very confused about what you just said. I need some clarification. You said it's not two parcels, but we're looking at two parcels on the ordinance that we're approving.
In our APN book, it is actually one parcel, but for some reason in our GIS and, and I don't know where you're referencing from.
I'm referencing from the ordinance itself. It speaks of 008-03817 and 008-03844.
It's actually one parcel. I, I don't know why there's two parcels, but the way it was, I don't know.
One second. Director Darby, would you like to come up and join the discussion? Thank you. All right. All right.
Hello, everyone. Is it on? Yeah.
Yes.
So this particular property, from my understanding, so this was actually submitted prior to my arrival here, but at this particular property, I understood there was actually two different parcels, two different lots. And my further understanding was that the property owner was proposing to go from one lot to two lots. In the past, he's done that, and then he's proposing to go back from two lots to one lot. Is that correct, Ms. Chair?
On the APN book, okay, it was, it was two lots and right now is one lot.
Okay. So my recommendation for this particular property, because when I read the staff report and reviewed this, I was under the impression that they were going to two lots and that they were proposing to have zoning agriculture on one lot and M2 heavy industrial on the second lot. Is that correct?
No.
Okay.
I, it's probably a lot easier if I actually had the, the map and...
I, I think we might be able to share that. That would be from last week.
So, Mr. Chair, perhaps you would want to just take a break from this, give staff time to go get the file?
Yeah.
Move on and pick up some other agenda items?
Yeah, that, does that sound amenable?
Yes.
Yeah. So Sam, what was that? Microphone to, to me?
No, no.
Oh. She just stated that if they could take a short break and come back at another time. What time, how much time do you think you'd need to get the information needed?
I would say what, about 15 minutes?
15? Okay. And we should be on some other subjects by then, and then we'll call you up. So we'll go ahead and...
Thank you very much. I apologize for the inconvenience.
No problem. Thank you. We'll see you shortly. All right. And so with that, we will move on to 7.2. In the meantime, 7.2 is Consideration of Participation Agreement Between the California Mental Health Services Authority and Lake County Behavioral Health Services for the Peer Support Specialist Certification Program FY 2021-2023. Director Metcalf, are you still with us?
I, you haven't gotten rid of me yet. Hello again, members of the board. This, this is a very exciting item. This is for the much anticipated Peer Support Certification Program, which has been facilitated by the California Mental Health Services Authority, and which they've been working with the California Department of Healthcare Services to, to put this together. The California Mental Health Services Authority is taking the lead in this initiative, in, in particular around identifying sustainable program funding to support this effort in addition to developing a training curriculum, et cetera. So what this means is that these participating counties, of which we are, we are one, will be able to certify our peer support staff, again, after going through a training curriculum development approved by both California Department of Healthcare Services and the California Mental Health Service Authority. But what this will do, this will allow our peer support staff to be able to provide and bill for Medi-Cal services. This is, this is a first for our peer support staff who, who truly have so much to offer our clients since our peer support staff have lived, have actual lived experiences in behavioral health. So it, it's exciting because this is going to be another revenue stream for us. Of course, I'm always excited about that in addition to enhancing the services and programs we're already providing at, at our peer support centers. I hope that our administrative deputy director, Elise Jones, if she's still with us, she, she was more involved in the planning of all of this, and I, I hope I covered it. But Elise, did you, did you have anything else you might want to add to this?
No, I will just enhance and amplify your point that this certification enables the staff to be able to bill up some services that they provide through Medi-Cal, which is great because they're already doing a lot of, they're, they're doing the work already, but now we can receive revenue back from the work that is already done.
Thank you, Elise. So we're, we're asking for, we're asking for board approval for us to enter in, into this agreement with the California Mental Health Services Authority. And again, I, I can't say enough how, I mean, this is, this is monumental and very exciting. It, it's just, it's a really big deal. So I, we're just excited about it.
Thank you, Director Metcalf and Mrs. Jones. Is there anyone from the board that has any questions or comments or statements? No? Anyone from the public? It looks like we have a couple of hands up in the Zoom room, so I'll start with them. First was Julie Colfax. If you can unmute, and once you start, you have three minutes. State your name for the record.
Hello, can you hear me?
Somewhat. Maybe if you could speak closer to the microphone?
Yeah, I'm using a headset. Let me turn off my headset, my helm.
There we go. Now we can hear you.
Okay, wonderful. Is that better?
Yes.
Great. Thank you. My name is Julie Colfax. I'm the chair of your Mental Health Advisory Board, and I just wanted to speak up. I've been following, we as a board have been following the legislation for this very closely and are really impressed, most significantly by the fact that this will address one of our biggest challenges in Lake County, which is the lack of professionally prepared and qualified mental health supports. This allows us to increase the number of people who are able to help out on the frontline. Yes, we have a group of people who've been doing a wonderful job of providing many of these services already, and this will increase their educational level. And I think, I, I'm hoping, will truly increase the number of frontline mental health services providers that we can utilize here in the county and that we can employ here in the county. So I see the potential for this to dramatically increase both our mental health services provided in our county as well as employment of people who are in recovery from mental illness and from substance abuse disorders. illness and from substance abuse disorders for our county. So I strongly encourage this program and will continue to follow this legislation as they further develop the training programs, which by the way, the state is going to be, or the CalMHSA is going to be providing much of the training for this online. And I plan to be actively involved in that as well. So I just want to say thank you guys so much for making this part of our county as well and directly addressing many of the challenges we have here. So thank you very much.
All right. Thank you for your comment. Next is Betsy Khan. Betsy, if you can unmute and go ahead, you have three minutes.
Thank you, Chairman Grandle. Can you hear me all right?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Yes, I sent an inquiry to the staff of the administration earlier, a few days ago, in regard to the agreement itself because the last page does not contain a specific scope of services and funding description. I, as a peer counselor for the County of Lake in many venues for the last 16 or 17 years, I'm certainly delighted that we're going to be able to get that certification for the people who are currently actually volunteering and providing services as I have under supervision of various agencies. This is all really wonderful stuff, but I'd like to know what, the reason I'm concerned about this blank page is because I would like to know what the degree of participation will be from our local behavioral health services staff and the people who are currently doing this work for the development of the curricula. Because the curricula itself is not defined yet. The legislation did not provide funding. Certainly, agencies at the Department of Healthcare Services and so forth will be doing that this year, possibly next year in legislation, but this is a blank check. Could somebody please address this absence of information?
Thank you, Betsy. I can start. It is actually a blank, basically for what you just said, that a lot of this is still under development, so it is blank on purpose. But Elise, sorry, I keep asking, asking, I know, Elise, you went back and forth on this with, I believe, someone at the state level yesterday and I don't know if you have any more to add to that.
I do. Thank you. So this participation agreement actually does not have any funding associated with it. It is simply stating that we're going to participate earnestly with CalMHSA in the development of this and we are building the plan as we're applying it to just be very honest because we're trying to catch up and keep pace with legislation. This is moving quite fast and I am myself delighted at the leadership of the California Mental Health Services Authority for their initiative on this project. And so it is intentional, we're aware that there isn't yet a defined scope of services and associated costs because we haven't yet developed it. However, it will be developed. I am optimistic that may be forthcoming before the end of the fiscal year. I don't want to make any promises. That would be my wish and that we would further update this participation agreement with any monetary value. However, it's important to note that there is no cost for certification. It's, I believe, simply an application with the Department of Healthcare Services.
Thank you for answering that, Ms. Jones. I think there is no one else on Zoom. There is somebody in the chambers here. Would you please come to the mic? You have your three minutes and state your name for the record.
Joan Moss, I would like to know if the terms California Mental Health Services and Lake County Behavioral Health Services, are they more or less one and the same or is there a difference? I remember that everything used to be called mental health services and then all of a sudden it was changed to behavioral health services. My second question is, I'm quite familiar with the peer counseling going on and I'd like to know if this means that the peer counseling that happens, that is now volunteer, will now, that the people who get the counseling will be...
Ms. Moss.
Be able to pay? And then I want to know if the senior peer counselors will be paid? Okay, thank you for letting me finish those questions.
Okay. And again, we'll have them reach out to you again because this is about the certification, approving the certification program.
Peer counseling.
Right. And so Director Matt Caff, if you can reach out to her with the questions as well on that. Thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you.
And so with that, I don't see anyone else on Zoom. If we can bring it back to the board for action or any other discussion. Supervisor Spatier.
Yeah, no, I appreciate Ms. Khan's comment. My assumption was that when we receive money, we usually have to approve the receiving of funds from the state. So I believe that if that is the case, that in the future, we do receive some funds, that we would have to approve that coming in because any changes to what we believe were going to be our revenue streams and any new revenue streams, we usually have to approve. And at that point, we would have this, that, there would be a part of that topic and that conversation would include what the funds would be used for. If it's used for a contract, the scope of services would be within the contracts and so on and so forth. So that was my assumption and I'm just kind of checking in with Director Matt Caff if that is the correct assumption or if it's a different process.
No, absolutely. This again is just allowing us to enter into this agreement. As Ms. Jones pointed out, there, you know, there's no funding associated with it, so this isn't the last your board will see of this.
All right. Thank you for that. All right. So it looks like we just need action. Supervisor Spatier?
I move to approve the participation agreement between California Mental Health Services Authority and Lake County Behavioral Health Services for the Peer Support Specialist Certification Program, fiscal year '21 through '23.
Motion by Supervisor Spatier?
Second.
Oh, actually, I'm sorry. Well, we have a second, but I'll go ahead and open it for...
No, I was just gonna, go ahead. It's already seconded.
Oh.
Sorry.
All right, so we have a second by Supervisor Pyska. Johanna, please conduct the roll call.
Okay, Supervisor Simon?
Yes.
Supervisor Sabatien?
Aye.
Supervisor Scott?
Aye.
Supervisor Pyska?
Yes.
And Supervisor Grandle?
Aye.
Thank you.
So moving on to, actually, it looks like we have our Community Development Department back with us right on time. And so we'll go ahead and go back to item 5.10. And with us, we have Director Mary Darby and Satir Hand from the Community Development And so we'll continue where we left off with the map is what we were looking for, something of that nature?
Thank you.
There we go. Oh, oh, yeah, there we go.
Okay. So this is basically in reference to the General Plan Amendment, GAPAP 2002, and the rezone RZ 2002. And basically what it is, is that it is actually one parcel. In the past, the parcels were merged. They went through a parcel merger. And so actually, it is one parcel. So what you're looking at, what I've identified in yellow, is what the applicant is proposing to split zone, although split zoning is silent in the code. So that area that's highlighted is what they're proposing as M2, which is heavy industrial. So everything surrounding that parcel is still agricultural. So that answers the question about whether or not it's an existing one zone, I mean, one lot or two lots. So it's actually, right now, it has been merged, the two lots have been merged and it's one lot.
Okay. Does that cover what you were discussing? Supervisor Spatier?
I'm trying to find it on here. For some reason, I can't find it. So the area that shows 17, the number 17 with the circle?
Yes.
And the number that shows 44?
Yes. So currently...
That creates a complete one lot of 61 acres rather than 144, 117?
Forty-seven, seven. So 008-03817 and 008-03844, the two parcels together, as identified on that map, would be approximately 40.77 acres in size, the entire lot as one when it was merged. The applicant is proposing to take approximately seven of those acres, which is identified in yellow on your map, and rezone that particular portion of the lot to M2 heavy industrial.
And there won't be a new parcel created? It will just be a split zone for that entire property?
So from my professional recommendation as a planner, my recommendation is that this particular property or project be reverted back to the Planning Commission and that the applicant actually apply for a tentative parcel map to properly subdivide the lots from one lot into two lots.
Ms. Grant?
This would have to go back to your board. This is the second reading of an ordinance for a project your board's already approved. You can't change your mind in this manner. All right?
We can send it back to the Community Development.
At this point, all you can do is refuse it for a second reading and rehear the matter. But again, this is only on for one thing. It's only on for the second reading of an ordinance. And so none of the people who may have an interest in this action have any idea that something is going to change. And the Brown Act requires that they be informed of that first, as you well know. So that would have to adjust. There is a question, just in terms of the, you have two different parcel numbers, but the property had merged. Your board may want to inquire why there's not just a parcel number. I know that there was some discussion about how the GIS is something else, but the act of the merger generally results in a parcel number, does it not?
That is correct. So why it's not represented as such in the current zone, I have no idea. I just, my recommendation, it would be very, I don't know about split lots. The zoning code is very silent on split lots, so I'm not very familiar with the split lots here for the county. And it would be very difficult to be able to identify which seven acres is actually going to be zoned M2.
Supervisor Spatier?
So two things. One, I can't approve this today and I apologize that I didn't have these thoughts for my first reading, just for the fact that we're approving two parcel numbers being proposed with a different zone when we're being told today that it's one. So I think that the ordinance that we would be approving is already incorrect and that we need to figure out, are we talking about 17 or are we talking about 44? Or what is the new parcel number that makes it one? And two, I don't know that A and M2 can be split when M2 doesn't allow for A to happen within one another. I think that to have two different zones that have overlap of allowable uses makes sense, but to have two different zones that conflict with one another and don't allow those types of uses to happen within its zone, I'm confused and maybe I just don't know enough of zoning to say that it works or not. But at this point, with the way it's written, we're not split zoning, we're turning it into an M2 and we're doing that for two parcels, not one. So I'm not comfortable with moving forward with the ordinance as it's written in front of us today.
Did you have anything to add to that?
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify, if it's okay, Satir, on staff analysis. So staff analysis, when this was actually analyzed by staff, the M2 recommendation for approval is because the parcel that's to the east of the number 17 on your map is actually zoned M2. So that compatibility of an adjacent zoning that's there would not be unusual and it wouldn't change the character because M2 zoning is already adjacent to that property. And I'm sure that that's probably what staff was looking at when they did their analysis of this particular property. There are, in a lot of mixed use zonings, you will find that you can have multiple uses within a particular area. So it may not be unusual to have industrial uses next to an agricultural uses. It's just, so that's probably what staff was thinking about when they prepared their analysis on that.
And I appreciate that. I made the same comment on our first reading, that the area already has M2 and it's surrounded by ag. It's the two together as a split zone. The adjacent makes perfect sense to me. That property, you can do such and such and this property, you could do such and such. But I'd like to get a little bit more information of how the split would work, knowing after going through the zoning ordinance of M2, that they kind of conflict with one another. How does one piece of land have two conflicting zones on one? So I appreciate the comment, clarification, but I'm very uncomfortable with moving forward as the ordinance is written.
Do you have anything else to add to that or?
No, we just would like the opportunity to come back and correct our staff reports and present it where facts and we're a little bit more reasonable.
And Ms. Grant, if we refuse to move forward on the second reading, goes back to the Planning Commission or does it go back?
Comes back here.
It's already been before your board and your board has considered this item and you've made certain determinations. Now, you can, you can certainly say that the ordinance as written needs to be redrafted for clarity's sake and direct the Community Development Department to come back with further explanation and perhaps more explanatory language to justify this split. But that's, you can't simply...
Send it back.
You can't use the ordinance to rehear the entire item. Your board's made certain decisions. So I suppose that it would be very unusual and generally reconsideration of a board item is done on the day that the item is considered. I suppose your board could reconsider the item in total since it came to you, but that would require a re-noticing, et cetera. And even with the ordinance, there's going to have to be notification to the property owners and all interested parties because, again, the second reading, it's not that you can't change it, but at this point, you're going to be changing it so that you'll start the process again.
I see.
The ordinance process, not the entire process, unless that's what your board wants. But that is going to require your board to articulate the basis for that because, again, you've already made these decisions. Now, if you think you had wrong information or if you think you misunderstood something, that's one thing, but otherwise, what you may want to do is just direct staff to take the ordinance back and correct it to be more explanatory as to the split, if a majority of you feel that's necessary. That's assuming that that is the case, so...
So I know that they've stated they would do that, yes? Or, yes? And so does, Mrs. Scott, Supervisor Scott, I'm sorry.
I would like to see it come back, which is clarification of parcel numbers so we can move forward. I don't want to see this completely redone. Just some clarification and bring it back further.
Supervisor Simon?
I'm in agreement with that also. I'd like to, made a decision to move forward with it, so I'm prepared to do that with clarification.
And you as well? So it looks like we have, we have direction then.
All right, so your board is in, I'm sorry, let me clarify, just for clarification.
Ms. Grant, go ahead.
So your board's declining to adopt the ordinance because of some confusion as to the language and you're directing staff to come back with clarified language as to the zoning ordinance and further explanation.
Yes, it looks like that's what we're going to do.
You may want to inquire if staff has any questions, just to make sure there's nothing left hanging.
Do you have any questions, staff?
Yes. So my question is, and it may be more for legal, is, so how do we identify the meets and bounds of the seven plus acres that's on a split lot?
We'll help you.
Okay.
If the board... We'll help you. If the board allows, my office can help with that.
Yes, that would help.
All right, thank you. We can do that, and we will return. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And one more, I'll open it up for public comment since we had to, I still have to open it up for public comment if that's accurate. So in case there's anybody that has any questions or comments or concerns about this, doesn't look like there's anybody in the chambers, and I don't see anybody in the Zoom room as well. All right. Thank you for your time, and thank you for your willing to work on this with us. So with that, it is 10:40. Does anybody need a break?
I do.
All right. So we will conduct a five-minute break. We'll come back at 10:45. And Sam? Thank you. Right. And we're coming back. We're a little behind from 10:45, but we're, we're going to make it. And we have everyone here. So we will move forward on item 7.3, consideration of chairman's recommendation, 2022 committee assignments for members of the Board of Supervisors and the clerk of the board, but I will defer to CIO Hutchinson, if you have.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm trying to get my Zoom open back up. I want to introduce Carolyn Purdy, our administrative analyst, too. She prepared this item, and she's going to present it today. Carolyn? Carolyn, are you with us in the Zoom? There you are.
Oh, there she is.
Well, her mic unmuted. Carolyn, can you hear me? Mr. Chair, would you like to move on to 7.4?
Yes.
We'll get that figured out.
We'll move on to 7.4 briefly, and the item is consideration of the following advisory board appointments, Cobb Municipal Advisory Council, Hartley Cemetery District, and Maternal-Child and Adolescent Health Advisory Board. And so these are, I think, committee, ad hoc committee, well, not ad hoc committees, I'm sorry, voluntary advisory positions. Does anybody have anything to add about this, or anything to say about the people that applied? Supervisor Pyska?
So the Cobb Area Council likes to have an alternate, and Joe Schneider is the alternate. So is that, do we appoint alternates, or do we just let the council kind of have their alternate? Because they sort of groom that person to step into the role when there's a vacancy. I don't know that we officially appoint them or not. What do you think, Anita?
Ms. Grant?
Have they had an alternate appointed in the past?
They always have an alternate.
Appointed, though, or just?
I don't believe that the alternate's been appointed. I'm fine either way. I just don't know how the other advisory councils operate, if this is, if we should just keep it to only the five?
It would go back to whatever the board had previously approved. And for some groups, you have authorized alternates. For others, you have not. If you, if your board hasn't authorized an alternate, you wouldn't appoint one formally.
I believe they, the alternate always submits an application, but I can't remember what the board prior has done.
So I don't believe that the advisory councils typically have alternates. So my recommendation would be that, that you not appoint. But of course, at any point, an appointed one steps down, that person could be appointed then.
So we just hold on to the application, so we know who it is, but we don't necessarily appoint them? Is that right? They've already submitted that?
If there's no opening, we would not.
Supervisor Sabatier, and then Supervisor Simon, following up.
I would suggest that the bylaws should at least let you know. I know that we are here to appoint members, but the bylaws would probably tell you if the alternates can just be done internally, or if that needs to get the approval of the supervisor. I don't know. That's my guess, is I would go to the bylaws.
I can look really quick.
Supervisor Simon?
That was going to be my same. The middle town area town hall doesn't have alternates. It's, it's written in the bylaws, the positions that are available. So yeah, the bylaw should, I know we approved the bylaws here at the board, but I think it's a simple process of going through that, the bylaws.
But I think the worry is that if, let's say that someone is not available, and the alternate is there, can they fill in if they have the vote? I think they need to be approved by the board first and foremost. But again, it refers back to what both of these gentlemen stated about the bylaws. I think it would cover that. And if we were going to add that, I've been going through these bylaws because one of my town councils is doing it. Everything refers back to those.
So, Mr. Chair, what I might suggest is that you approve, you consider approving the other two bodies for which you have applications, and hold on that one and let staff research their bylaws. Carolyn Purdy, who is now ready to present the preceding item, also tells me that she believes Cobb may already have an alternate process. So let us pull that information and have the right answer for you.
You're okay with that, Supervisor Pyska?
Yep, that works for me.
Supervisor Sabatier?
And because of the statement that was just made, that if a member doesn't show up, an alternate, I would have to say that has to be appointed by the Board of Supervisors if you're going to be a voting member.
Right.
So that's an important technicality there, too. You can be an alternate to get groomed so that maybe you can become a member that votes. But if you're going to vote as an alternate, you probably have to be approved as an alternate.
And establish quorum, I would think, too. Ms. Grant?
Yeah, I was just going to, to state that when your board approves the creation of any type of advisory council, you approve the composition of the voting membership. And if you're going to allow alternates to do anything, then that would be in that approval. It can be fleshed out in the bylaws, which, as Supervisor Simon noted, are also approved by the board. But nonetheless, your board has to determine composition and exactly how those things operate.
So it looks like we'll, we'll go ahead and postpone that item and let them research that for Cobb Area Council, and then move for the other two. But at the same time, I have to open it up for public input. It looks like we have somebody in the room that would like to come to the microphone and state your name for the record and give us your statement.
Yes, I'm John Moss. I'm going to back up Jessica Pyska. I was attending the meetings regularly when they were not Zoom, and we believed that we elected our own board. And then we found out that the county approves it. But I thought that was just the first time. I thought that the Cobb Area Council ran their own elections. That's what I believed happened. So maybe it's changed since then. Maybe the bylaws have been changed, but I think, I just wanted to put my two cents worth in. Because I was a member of the group. I belong to the Cobb Area Council.
Okay. Supervisor Scott, go ahead.
I know for the Scotts Valley Community Meeting, we appoint the members, but the members get to appoint who's going to be chair, vice chair, secretary. It's, that's not up to us as a board. It's up to the council to pick their leadership.
Okay. I didn't quite hear you-
Right.
So how it works at the CAC is that the group that's in attendance decides by consensus or vote who they want to submit, and then they submit the applicants here to be approved.
I see.
Right.
And again, by the bylaws.
By the bylaws.
We found them, and we can move forward with that.
I just don't know if the alternate is official or not. I guess that's the question. I, I know that this question has come up before.
Okay. So we still need to research that one, then?
I think so. I think so.
All right. So we'll leave that one for future item on the agenda, and we'll go ahead and move forward with the others. I don't see any other public input when it comes to Zoom. I'm going to look again. Yep, I don't see any.
With that, Mr. Chair, I move to approve Larry Carvarcio for the Hartley Cemetery District.
Second.
No motion, and a second. Johanna, can you conduct the roll call, please?
Okay, Supervisor Simon?
Yes.
Supervisor Sabatier?
Aye.
Supervisor Scott?
Aye.
Supervisor Pyska?
Yes.
And Supervisor Crandall?
Yes.
Thank you.
And then it looks like we have the Maternal-Child and Adolescent Health Advisory Board? Position, application?
Mr. Chair, I move to approve Elizabeth Anderson to the Maternal-Child Health Advisory Board?
Second.
Motion by Supervisor Scott, second by Supervisor Sabatier. Johanna, can you please conduct the roll call, please?
Okay, Supervisor Simon?
Yes.
Supervisor Sabatier?
Aye.
Supervisor Scott?
Aye.
Supervisor Pyska?
Yes.
And Supervisor Crandall?
Aye.
Thank you.
All right. So we'll end 7.4 and come back to the Cobb Area Council position in the future, future agenda item. And we will move back to 7.3. And do we have, yes, she is.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So we'll try it again. I want to introduce Carolyn Purdy, our administrative analyst, too, in the administrative office. And she worked diligently to get this done, and she's going to present it to you.
All right. Oh, she's on, we're not hearing you.
You are on mute, Carolyn. Or, well, you're not on mute, but we- Okay. So-
Would you like to come back to this?
I can hear you, but we know what you're saying.
We know what you're saying.
She is remote today, so she needs to test her microphone. So you could do your calendars while she sorts that out. Carolyn, you might want to call Steven and see if he can troubleshoot you through it.
So we'll move forward on to, or move back to item 7.1, which is-
Or Carolyn, you could call. That's right.
The calendars.
Oh, there she is.
Oh, let's see. Oh, yep. Well, no, we will do the calendars later. Okay. Carolyn.
Okay. I think it's fixed. Sorry about that. Okay. Good morning, Chairman Crandall and Supervisors. Before you today are the proposed committee assignments for the 2022 calendar year. There have been adjustments from last year's list, which include the additional committees formed, as well as the removal of committees that are no longer active or necessary, and that's reflected in the memo. It has been brought to my attention, there is one committee that did not make the list, which is the Cannabis Tax Committee. The proposed 2022 members for that committee would be Tina Scott and E.J. Crandall. This committee will be added, and the recommended assignment should be amended to reflect this change. Also received was an e-comment regarding the Mental Health Board indicating they now meet on the second Thursday of each month from 3:00 to 5:00 p.m., and this date and time will be updated on the list. If there are any other changes to the listed meeting schedules, please forward that information to me, and I will get that updated as well. So that is all I have. Is there any questions from any of you?
Yes, Supervisor Pyska?
So I have a question.
Microphone.
I have a question about the Fire Safe Council. This comes up in many conversations. It was originally created as an ad hoc committee, and as we work to transition it to something else, is it still an ad hoc committee, or is it a standing committee? Do you-
I show it as a standing committee, but it, you know, that doesn't really mean anything. It could have been not put in the right category when it was added.
Well, I think it's correct to be a standing committee. I just wanted to double check with you because it was created-
Okay.
-an ad hoc committee, I think, in 2009. So that would be the right thing.
Okay, very good.
Okay, thanks, Carolyn.
Supervisor Sabatier?
Just wanted to bring up a few items and also talk directly to Supervisor Scott. I asked to take your spot on the Yolo 2x2. Did not make sense that I would not be on the Yolo 2x2 since the dam is within the district, too. And just wanted to make sure that you were aware that that was my request. I figured you'd be sad. And then I wanted to, I know I've had conversations with our CIO about how this forum has progressed and evolved. What I'd like to see possibly in the future, and just as an idea, I don't want to change anything today, but just as a conversation, is which meetings are public and which meetings are private. We have our ad hoc committees, which we do internal conversations, which eventually comes back to the Board of Supervisors. I think that the ones that are public, there's agendas. Oftentimes, there's meeting minutes, and so that makes it very accessible and very transparent as far as the public being able to find out what's going on with these. But I think that we need to come back in the near future with what is the goal of the ad hoc committee. Ad hoc committees are supposed to be short, not long-term, not standing committees. And so if we could come back with some specific goals that we are aiming to have with the committees that still exist, so we can at least let the public know, let the rest of the Board of Supervisors that are not within those committees be aware of what the goal is for those committees. And with that, I just want to share the ones that I'm on. The CARES Act, ARPA, really, the CARES Act can drop off, probably. But the ARPA one, we're still kind of evolving how those funds will be used. We just brought that back to the Board of Supervisors on 12/21 last year. And as things progress and we have final decisions on exactly how we're going to be utilizing and spending those funds, we'll be bringing that back to the Board of Supervisors. But we want to continue those conversations internally to ensure that we have some viable options that are being brought here to the board. The Economic Development Task Force, at this moment in time, we are focusing on the items that we have brought to the Board of Supervisors to make sure that there is progress that is happening, and still intend to do quarterly reports as far as what type of progress we have seen. And so we're not adding new elements to the economic task force as far as projects, but we are just continuing to pay attention to the ones that have been approved by the board and ensuring that every department is gaining the support to be able to move those projects forward. And again, coming back to the board with those comments. And I'm hoping that other board members who are on different ad hoc committees will also let the public know, as well as other members that are of the board that are not on those committees, know what ad hoc committees are up to and why those committees are still in existence. Other than that, no problem with the list.
Supervisor Pyska, did you have something?
Oh, no. I'm sorry.
Supervisor Scott?
The only thing I would like to add is if I could get an alternate on the Library Board of Trustees, we meet via Zoom. But as you see with this list, I have conflicting committees, which is the Juvenile Justice Commission and the Law Library. The Juvenile Justice Commission hasn't been meeting very often, so it hasn't been an issue. But if I could get an alternate on the Law Library, because they have sometimes a hard time getting a quorum.
Let me see. The Law Library, and I thought that that-
Supervisor, are those meetings done digitally or in person?
The Law Library is digital, via Zoom. You could be in person or via Zoom. The Juvenile Justice Commission hasn't met for over a year and a half, so.
I'd be willing to do the Law Library as your alternate.
Wonderful, thank you.
So E.J., that was you?
Yes. And I do have a couple of requests as well. One, I'd like to see if I can come off of the, as the alternate of continuum of care, if there's anyone that would like to take that spot. Be open to, see if anyone would like to.
When?
They meet on the first Thursday at 1:00, I believe.
Yeah, first Thursday, yeah.
Is it two?
Three, three to four.
And the third Thursday?
Well, the third Thursday is if you're on the executive committee, which I am.
Okay. So it's only the first Thursday. Let me see. I think I can do that.
Can do that? Okay. Thank you. It's, it's alternate. Usually, you're, there's like bylaws or rules that state that as a voting member, you have to be present or something like that. So it's a very intricate type of situation.
Yeah. If you're not present at a COC meeting, you not only lose your vote for that meeting, you lose your vote for the next meeting. So you really need to have a member there, or you lose your vote for two meetings.
Okay.
Wow.
We'll talk more.
Wow. Yeah.
They really want you there.
Okay.
That's punishment. So my other request is the Terrorism Improvement District, I'm the alternate on that as well. I wanted to see if there's something else we can do. I think we talked a little bit about maybe having staff. CIO Hutchinson?
Yes, Mr. Chair. What I wanted to propose with that one, if, if your board agrees, is that we appoint a staff person as the primary, and, and if Supervisor Pyska is willing, move her to the alternate spot. As you probably remember, in the past, staff was assigned to the primary seat. And if you're willing, I'd like to put Susan Parker in that seat, with Jessica as the alternate.
If Susan is willing?
She already told me she would be.
Awesome. Yes. That would be great.
Okay.
So, so in terms of the sorting of the list, I do agree with what Supervisor Sabatier has raised. The list could be sorted more effectively. If you look at, starting with the first page, you know, I think it was assumed that these were mostly the public meetings, but there is a mixture of things. And so Carolyn and I will work on what seems to be a more effective sort, so that it's more clear to the public for the ones that they can dial into.
Okay. Supervisor Scott, you have your opinion? Okay. And then I had, so thank you for that, C.AO Hutchinson. There's also an addition that I don't think was listed, the Golden State Connect. That was something we just barely approved, I think, in November or December. It's attached to R.C.R.C., Golden State Finance, those, that's another one that needs to be listed, and that's one that I think Supervisor is about to have myself on.
Looks like we did miss it, so. The GSCA. And Carolyn, do you have that one in your records? Who, do you know off the top of your head who we assigned to GSCA? That was not too long ago. You're on mute again. You're on mute. There you go.
I do not have that right in front of me, but we did just do that and send the information in, so I will get that, and let me look it up really quick.
I'm going to guess that it's probably the same as R.C.R.C.
It is. It is exactly the same. And then so is the other committee that was created by R.C.R.C. It's an ad hoc for, Special Ad hoc Committee for Wildfire and Forest, and I remember, remember they asked if we would be on that as well. And, yeah, it's too bad that you aren't on R.C.R.C. for that one, but we'll work it out. But that's another one. That's also an ad hoc committee for the time being, but because we have so much discussions about that subject, R.C.R.C. decided to pull together everybody in the rural area to discuss that. So that's another one that probably could be added to the list. And so that's all I have. Does anybody else have anything else? No. And so I see we have some public comment.
Oh.
Supervisor Pyska.
In response to the ad hoc committee comment, so we, let's see, I am on the, the CDD Ad hoc Committee with Supervisor Simon, and that has really been since last spring to support the new director who stepped in, Director Darby, and help streamline and support the cannabis, the mass amount of cannabis applicants, and we're going to be having a report that later this month to the Board on the status.
It's planned for January, yes.
January.
And then also the Public Health Ad hoc Committee, which along the same lines as CDD is supporting the new director as they come in next week, Jonathan.
Okay. And Supervisor Sabatier?
Yes, thank you for those updates, and I neglected to update on the Potter Valley Project Ad hoc Committee. You just saw a letter that came to the Board last month opposing a grant proposal from Sonoma Water, and I think that the conversation still continues. I know that Supervisor, our Chair Crandall and myself have been having more conversations as of late with people who are very knowledgeable with the FERC process, and I think we're going to continue. The goal of the committee is to keep our eye on the FERC process, to make sure we don't miss anything, and to continue those conversations, because it's going to, it's a heavy lift politically to ignore this, and we have to keep at it, keep our eye on it. So that is the purpose of the committee and the continuation of the committee at this moment in time.
Thank you for that update. I neglected myself as well to update on that, so. All right. It looks like we're, we have any other comments from the Board? No. Okay. So we will go to public comment, which looks like we have somebody in the Zoom room, and Betsy Khan.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have two comments and a question for you on the subject at hand, specifically regarding the list itself. I'm really glad to hear that you're going to go through it and organize it in a more rational fashion. But for many years now, I have asked and hoped for the creation of a list that would provide hyperlinks in the published list on the supervisor's page where each committee's website page, or website, or whatever it is that provides the information about the committee, is a hyperlink. I would like to suggest that you create a standard for the content that would be provided with that hyperlink. So for example, the minutes, the agendas, the times and places of the meetings, and who to contact, not just the administration, but the meeting chairperson or staff person. That would be tremendously helpful for the public and for us to be able to understand what you're doing. The second thing is that as far as the two committees that I'm, I was listening for discussion on, the 2x2 Committee is a great example of a committee that comes and goes. It might have some value, it might actually have a purpose, but people vaguely remember what it is. It's actually pretty important to us in terms of our relationship with the Yolo County Flood Control and Water Conservation District and our future planning for water projects developed in the upper Cache Creek Basin. So I'd like to see, that's a great example of something where I'd like to see, what is that committee for? What is its governance structure? You know, how does the public get information about its activities and its purpose? Finally, on the subject of the Fire Safe Council, the discussion of whether it's a standing committee or an ad hoc committee just completely bypasses the fact that it was created as a fire safe advisory council by the Board of Supervisors in 2009, and then handed to the Resource Conservation District under a contract in 2010, which then turned it into a separate council with no governing board, no bylaws, no members, you know, it's, I would really beg you to please, if you have to do it with an ad hoc committee or whatever you need to do, we need to straighten this out. It's crucial to us for the implementation of the Community Wildfire Protection Plan.
Your three minutes is up.
Compliance with general plan requirements. Oh, sorry. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. And so, does anybody have anything to add on that? Supervisor Sabatier?
I'll just say that I appreciate the comment of the hyperlinks. I know that we did some updates and some upgrades to the committee lists and accessibility to especially the digital applications for those who wanted to apply to be in the position. I agree that we should get hyperlinks, and I'd be happy to work with staff so that staff doesn't have to have this as an added project. I think that's something that I can help out with by obtaining the links and helping update the form. So I think that's a good idea.
So Supervisors, we're actually in the process of updating the county's websites, the whole platform. We're in the process of selecting a new system for that, and it should be much more functional and should be able to offer a lot more features and self-service options for the public.
Thank you, C.AO Hutchinson. I know also I've been working on some things with my three municipal advisory committees as well to try and get a lot more out there for hyperlinks, you know, the social media type things, so that people can be aware of what's going on. So thank you for that. And it looks like we have someone in the chambers. Would you, you have three minutes if you'd like to come to the microphone and give us your inquiry?
John Moss, I am a member of the public, participating in the Sustainable Groundwater Management Plan. I want to know what kind of a committee this is? Is this a county committee, a state committee, who are responsible to? And if we are responsible for following the Brown Act? Thank you.
And so let me find this one. I think it's the, one of the ad hocks, right?
No, it's not a board committee.
Oh, no.
It's not a board committee.
Yeah, that's not a board committee, so it doesn't, it doesn't apply to the Board of Supervisors, so.
It's not a committee?
It's not, it's not one of our committees from the county, so.
It's a state.
Thank you, so.
You don't know.
You would have to come back to the microphone and address me. Supervisor Sabatier can as well, but.
It's not a committee that has Board of Supervisors, and right now we're only discussing committees that Board members are on. It is a committee that is within the county, and it is Water Resources that is in charge of that committee through the Sigma process.
Thank you.
But it does not have any Board members on it. It is the community and those stakeholders that are on there.
State. Okay, thank you. That's what I wanted to know.
As far as the Brown Act, I would suspect that, yes, they have to follow the Brown Act, but don't quote me on that.
You're sure of that?
Water Resources.
You'd have to check with Water Resources.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. And so, let's see here. Bring it back to the Board. Are there any other comments or questions that you want to answer or have, or Supervisor Scott?
I just wanted to add that I agree that we need to be putting information out there with the hyperlinks, information for our committees. I know IT's been absolutely wonderful for me with uploading onto our website the agendas and minutes for the Scott-Sally Community Meeting, so it's going to take a lot of work on our part, too, to make sure that we're giving staff the information to be able to put out there.
All right. There's not anything else? Supervisor Simon, go for it.
One last comment, too. You know, and I know we go through, and we're always creating committees and everything, and just want to make sure that, you know, the list is good right here. You know, this is the time for everybody to speak up and say, hey, I want to be on that committee or not. I want to put it out there, because I know Supervisor Chair, former Chair Sabatier, Supervisor Sabatier, he brought up questions about the CDD Committee, and I just, you know, we are moving forward, as Jessica said, to bring some stuff forward. We just want to make sure that, it seemed like you were pretty interested in that committee. And so I just, I'm just going to put it out there before we approve it, because I'm fine with the way it is, but if you want any changes to that.
No, no changes needed. I just know that we've heard from the public that some of these committees is hard to follow because they are internal, and so I think when we get the chance to provide some input to, or some feedback to the public and let them know what is happening in those committees, that it just creates a level of transparency that I think we are, we're all trying to attain, but we need to have those more intimate conversations where we can spitball bad ideas and good ideas, and then come back to the Board of Supervisors with the leftovers of what everyone's agreed upon. And it's hard to do that in more public sessions at times, but nothing is happening behind closed doors other than discussions and then bringing things back to us. So that was the only intention that I had. I think that I'm, it would be weird for me to jump in right now for the fact that you've already both worked so hard and long on those things. I want to see the results of your work. I do not want to get in the middle of it.
Okay. And I just bring it up so we're all, we're just communicating, and just for the public's information, there's only two members of the Board, so it is just discussions. It comes back here. Everything happens in open session on those discussions of those ideas or suggestions are brought to the Board as a whole, and we work continuously to do that, you know, through all these committees. One other thing, and I'm just going to ask a question, I always bring something up every year, but, so what I see is the Board, and which has been this, the only Board that I've ever seen where we had a non-Board member, a Board of Supervisor, serving on one of our Boards, which was PEG, which we left Supervisor Roby on there as that. So I just ask this Board, as I move along, we have, we appoint a planning commissioner with this Board in the future, or maybe Boards going forward, ever have a discussion of appointing individuals of our communities and our districts to serve on these Boards? Because when we're talking about transparency, I think that would go a long ways to do that. I don't know. I'm bringing it up today, just as an idea to think about over, moving forward, but you know, just, I want to, I want to ask what the Board's thoughts are on it, because it don't have to be somebody who's the actual, could just be an alternate that helps or sets, someone from your district that may be interested in LTA, APC, LAFCO, understanding these things that are running in our county. So I bring it up as just a question to the Board, and I don't know what the legal ramifications of that, I haven't talked to Anita about it, but we're talking about committees today. But I only bring it up because there was an example.
There's a precedent, yeah.
A non-Board member to serve on the PEG Board for many years, and I know he was a former Supervisor, but I just asked that question.
Ms. Grant?
Oh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Some of this depends upon the enabling law for the creation of these committees. If it's a committee that is required of you by virtue of state law, then you cannot change the composition. You have to act within what the state allows. The Mental Health Advisory Board is a state authorized committee. When it's a committee or a group which your Board establishes and populates, you can adjust the composition of that body any way that you would like. I would also say, too, that, there was a mention of an ad hoc committee from 2009. There's, the law and the Brown Act evolve over time, and regardless of the number of Board members, if your Board creates a committee that's ad hoc, that means it's, it's like the Community Development Department. You create it for a very specific purpose. When you've reached that goal, the committee dissolves. It doesn't last. It will still be here in 2025. Anything else would be a standing committee, so you're going to have Brown Act compliance either way. The reason I mention that is because oftentimes, you know, when you bring people in from the outside, outside the internal county government, that will trigger the Brown Act. But normally now, the weight of authority indicates that any standing committee should have Brown Act compliance, unless you're dealing with a confidential matter of insurance or medical care or something like that.
Okay. That's my last comment.
Okay. Supervisor Scott?
You know, I understand where Supervisor Simon's coming from, having the public come in and sit on these committees, but I have found that for the majority of the committees I sit on, the public and the community that we serve, they're quite impressed when a Supervisor is involved in a meeting and present there. So I would really like to make sure that we, that we attend our meetings and that we're present in the community, because, you know, they expect their leaders to be there. And I know for many years, there was many committees that there wasn't a Supervisor there, and I was told over and over again, oh, it's great to have you here, because we haven't had that representation of a Supervisor at our committee meetings. So I think it's really important for us to be there.
All right. Any other comments, concerns, questions? Are we ready to, I think, what's the action on this? Let me go back to the, yeah, it looks like we just need to approve the list with corrections, additions, and.
So moved with all amendments.
Second.
So I have a motion and a second. Johanna, can you please conduct the roll call?
Yes, so Supervisor Simon.
Yes.
Supervisor Sabatier.
Aye.
Supervisor Scott.
Aye.
Supervisor Pyska.
Yes.
And Supervisor Crandall.
Yes, yes. Thank you. And so with that, we'll end that discussion, and we will move to our 1115, our 6.5 item presentation by CSAC Executive Director Graham Nowes. Did I pronounce it correctly?
It's, good morning, Mr. Chair. It's Canows like knife.
Oh, okay. Actually, you can come sit, you can come sit at, yeah.
Whatever works for you.
And would your associate like to come up as well, or, yeah? Probably best of this one, just because there's two, yeah, there's two chairs.
So we're missing a chair there, aren't we? So, yeah, people have moved the chairs around in here.
There we go.
So Graham, you want to make sure the mic is within six inches or so, probably, six or eight.
Okay, how's that?
That's perfect.
All right. Awesome. We have a PowerPoint, which I believe your team.
Yes, we're putting it up.
We'll put it up.
Thank you, Matthew.
Before, before I dive in, I just wanted to thank you for the opportunity to be in front of you today and to talk a little bit about CSAC and who we are and what we do. Chastity Benson will be talking about.
Can we get the light back on briefly? Just, sorry about that.
Okay, no, all good. Chastity Benson with me will talk about our California County's Foundation and the work that it's doing that ties to Lake County, and then I'll spend a little, a few moments talking about our CSAC advocacy priorities, which I think will connect up with some of what is important to you as a Board, and would love to have some dialogue and questions with you all after that. CSAC is one of the oldest county associations in the country. We go back to 1895. We are in the same building we were back then, and so there's clearly been a lot of change, and we started as a county supervisors' only association, so there was no other part of us, and we've certainly evolved since then to represent the whole county family. But our bread and butter, of course, is folks like you and the other 291 elected supervisors in the state. The, what you all have gone through as leaders over the course of the past 18 to 24 months or so related to the pandemic is like nothing that we've ever seen. so related to the pandemic is like nothing that we've ever seen before. And so it's with immense appreciation for the work that you've done in leading your communities, the patience that your community has had in terms of working through the challenges of a pandemic, which I hope we begin to exit here in the not-too-distant future. Please advance the slide. Okay. Okay, thank you. So our core function is about advocacy. It's about serving as the unified voice for all 58 California counties. And the reality is that counties individually are strong on their own and have, have significant opportunity to make an impact. But when we put all 58 California counties together, representing all approximately 40 million people in California, it is incredibly powerful at the state and the federal levels. To be able to say that every county from LA and 10 million down to Alpine with 1,200 people all believe X makes a huge impact on state public policymaking and at the federal level as well. And so we like to focus on getting to that point and, and working it through. Ultimately, our charge is about developing and equipping county leaders to better serve their communities. That's, that's what we, that's what we attempt to do, advocating, beginning with collaborative partnership at the state and federal levels, but always being willing to get strategically aggressive when needed to ensure that you have the tools, the resources, and the flexibility to do things in a way that makes sense in, in your community. Next slide, please. So one of the ways that we do that is through our communications. It's about telling the county story, telling the county story through blogs, through videos, through op-eds, through connecting with the media, through walking the halls virtually of the legislature and working with the administration. It's to get that message out of the great work that is occurring here and in every other county in California. Social media has most certainly become a very prominent advocacy tool. We've got 4 million-plus Twitter views that are happening on our Twitter feed, and we use that very effectively to, to amplify your voice and your priorities through our communications. And, and then one of the, one of the gems of what we get to do is about seeking out county innovation. The, we have a challenge award program that's been in place for a number of years. And it's about looking in all different policy areas of county government for innovation, innovation that should be shared, shared among counties and shared with the public, shared with policymakers, and often that can help us in our overall advocacy. And so that's been, that's been one of the, one of our key jewels through all of this. Next slide, please. Thank you. We also operate a business arm. It's a separate legal entity, our CSAC Finance Corporation, and it's focused on direct-to-county and direct-to-taxpayer services. And I wanted to highlight two here this morning that I think may have some relevance here in Lake County. The first is Easy Smart Pay, which is a newer platform to pay property taxes. So for your property tax, for your taxpayers in your community that would have interest or that currently use credit cards to pay their property tax fees, there's a third-party fee that is attached to that that's upwards of 4% in a number of communities. And, and so through the Easy Smart Pay platform, we've been able to effectively cut that in half. The other part of this that is relevant is that there are a number of property owners, particularly business, but not limited to business, that do not have an escrow account. In fact, 2/3 of California property owners do not have an escrow account. And so get the, get the bills, you know, they have the two times a year to, to pay half of their property taxes. Easy Smart Pay offers an opportunity for them to do that on a monthly basis. And to do it on a monthly basis in a way that is consistent with the limitations in state law, because there are some significant limitations on the collection of property taxes in state law. And that, so that is the platform that's now available to all 58 counties in California. The next one I wanted to mention is a whole lot of words, the California Statewide Communities Development Authority, Community Improvement Authority. And that is new. It's just completed its first year, and it's entirely focused on workforce housing. In the marketplace, there are tax incentives at the extremely low-income and low-income housing level. Not enough, there's not enough to meet the gap in, probably in Lake County and in other communities in the state. There is nothing that is in place for moderate-income housing for the workforce that is delivering services in communities. And this program is specifically targeted at that population, trying to ensure that community, that people who work in a community can live in that same community. And so it's focused on conversion, acquiring and converting existing either market rate or substandard housing, mostly higher residential, into workforce housing. That would have an annual cap on the amount that the rate could increase in any given year. And that, in its first year, has led to successfully converting 7,000 units of housing in the state to workforce housing. It's a, it's a evolving, it's evolving opportunity, and it's in the guise of, we need an, all of the above strategy around housing in California. We need to tackle extremely low-income, low-income, workforce housing, every level. There's a housing challenge. And so this is meant to fit in the middle, in the middle of that in terms of the gap in what is available. Next slide, please. In addition to our business arm, we have a 501(c)(3). It's our California Counties Foundation. It is one of our crown jewels and has a direct connection to, to Lake County. And it is a crown jewel because there is excellence that is leading it. And that excellence is through Chastity Benson, who is the Director of Operations and Educational Programs for the foundation. And I'm going to ask her to share a few words about what the foundation is doing and how it connects back up to the work that you're all doing here in Lake County.
Thank you, Graham. So the California Counties Foundation basically serves as the education arm of your Association, California State Association of Counties. We offer professional development opportunities for county leaders throughout the state. We also offer special programs like New Supervisors Institute. And we also offer programs that help to build the bench in county leadership by offering programs like So You Want to Be a CAO or Department Head Seminar. Our education programs that we have throughout the state includes a partnership with Lake Mendocino County that we started two years ago, that CAO Hutchinson was very instrumental in helping us pull together. It's been a great partnership. We started the January before the pandemic started. So we were able to have two classes in person in Mendocino County. And a couple of months later, pandemic happened, and we had to quickly shift and figure out how we were going to continue to offer this vital program. And we talked to CAO Hutchinson and CEO Angelo in Mendocino County. And we came up with a plan to develop an online program so that your county, future county leaders could continue their professional development. It has been wildly successful. Last year, you had about nearly 20 people graduate from your program, and you have about 20 more who are in the program now, who hope will continue and receive their credential in June. I have to say that the Mendocino-Lake cohort has been such a positive group of people to participate in our programming. They have attended almost all of the classes, which almost never happens, where we start a cohort and almost everyone finishes at the end. They're active, they're engaged. Your very own Chair Crandall has taken some courses as well. We started to do some courses after speaking to many of the supervisors and CAOs with some of the social unrest that happened last year in diversity, equity, and inclusion. That was wildly popular. We had many, many leaders from Lake County participate, and not only the cohort classes, but also in the symposium that we did last year. And so I think Matthew Rothstein is out there. I just want to say a shout out to him. We worked very closely on some of the DEI efforts that y'all are doing here in Lake County, which is super exciting that you are embarking on that brave journey. Also wanted to talk a little bit about the foundation and our strategic planning over the next year. We are looking at finding ways to engage county supervisors more in the foundation and providing you with programs that you can utilize to build your network of other county supervisors, but also provide you an opportunity to talk about emerging issues that are currently you're facing, and maybe come up with some best practices and maybe strategies on how we can work together. One that comes to mind that seems to be a hot topic right now is workforce planning. We are going, we are seeing a wave in the great resignation, a wave of people are either retiring or they're deciding that they want to do something else, and they're not returning back to the workforce, which is leaving a big gap across all industries related to employee, employees, and, and, sorry, in an effort to get more employees to come and work for our county, public service. And so we want to bring supervisors together and CAOs together to kind of talk through some of the strategies that we can use to maybe attract people to come to public service. So please be on the lookout for that. We'll be doing workshops and, you know, again, this sort of roundtable idea that we've been tossing around, to bring you all together to talk about what the future workforce looks like for public service. I just sort of want to end by saying thank you for continuing to partner with the institute. Also, thank you for investing in your workforce. As we talk about workforce planning, we know that one of the things that younger employees are looking for is they want to be, they want to feel valued. And by investing in your workforce and their education, it makes them know that you care about them, you care about their, their future and their development. So thanks again for supporting us. And if I can ask her any questions at the end?
Great. Thank you, Chastity. Next slide, please. Yes, thank you. Perfect. So our core, as I mentioned at the beginning, is about advocacy. It's about ensuring that you do have the tools and the resources and the flexibility to do things in a way that makes sense in your community. And that's different in Lake than it is in the Central Valley than it is in Southern California. And it's different because your community is different. And so it should be structured that way, and you should have that flexibility. Our board last month adopted a two-page document of our overall priorities. But I wanted to highlight the key ones here with you today. The first is wildfire and drought, two issues that impact certainly Lake County. I think you've been, you've experienced more wildfire in your county than any other county in California, and it's been pretty wildly rampant up and down, up and down the state. The world seemed to change in 2017. I know you have history that goes much before that in terms of wildfire.
2015 it started.
2015 here in Lake.
It's got to be done every time.
It is, it's at a whole nother level, and certainly has an impact relative to the drought as well. We were successful last year collectively in having the largest ever state investment towards wildfire and drought, but it's not enough. More needs to be done. It's not just money, but money is certainly relevant as part of that. Policy is relevant, too. So that's a very high priority of ours. Broadband is a unique issue in that it took a pandemic to really wake up policymakers. And it's particularly true in some of the more urban areas of California. And so I often would say, over the past couple of years, the path to broadband goes through LA. And it goes through LA because a third of the legislature represents some portion of Los Angeles County. And really, it's a, the point is that you need urban communities to understand the impact of broadband in order for the votes to be there in the legislature, in order for us to make progress. And with a broad coalition that we led, along with our very close partners at RCRC and a host of others, and folks in the business community, there was a massive investment towards broadband, building a middle-mile network, having the last mile funded. It's $6.5 billion from this past year. Now, that, too, is probably not enough, but it is a massive infusion of dollars. The key now is to implement it and to do it right, and to ensure that there's a county voice that is part of that oversight body that's at the state level attached to this, that there are folks that are on the ground that can make it real. So that, so the concept of this lopping off seven to 10 years of the timeline to get broadband in communities is actually put in place, and, and that's able to be realized for, for members of your community. And so this is work that will, that will certainly continue through this year. Homelessness is, is another, also largest-ever investment, state investment towards homelessness this past year. I expect there'll, there'll be similar attention to homelessness and behavioral health in 2022, and will be part of that conversation, and wanting to ensure that there is clarity on who is responsible for what around homelessness. Because if it's not clear, the role of the state, the role of counties, the role of cities, the role of the faith-based community, the business community, the nonprofit community, if that's not all clear, then it's, the funding alone is not going to make the progress that is needed in communities. And so working through that so that there is clarity and the right level of ongoing funding, so that the service supports can be there for, for the population. I'm going to touch on cannabis, and then I'll circle back to Brown Act reform. Cannabis is unique. It's unique in, in my career, it's unique probably in our lifetimes relative to creating an entirely new public policy area from scratch. And Prop 64 certainly began that. And there have been dozens of layers of changes at the state level since then. There are different approaches locally from community to community. And it's a bit of a muddled mess in terms of who has what level of control, authority, and how to ensure that what's in place in your community actually reflects the priorities, the values, the intent of the local policymakers. And so we will be working on this issue. And there's both, there's a legal side to this, and there's an illegal side to this. And both are relevant in terms of policy and ensuring that we can navigate through this. It's an incredibly complex one with a lot of different stakeholders. And so we'll be navigating through that and certainly be, want to stay connected to you all in this county on this issue, so that we have your on-the-ground cold truth about what's happening and how, where we should be moving. And then finally, I wanted to touch on Brown Act reform, which is something until about 18 months ago, we didn't really talk about at all. And it goes all the way back to the, to 1953. That's when the Brown Act was adopted in California. And it does a number of things in terms of access. What's, what's changed and what got this to be a high priority for our board and for local government, counties, cities, schools in California, but also across the country, is that public discourse has changed. The level of civility in a number of public meetings has changed. There's a different and unhealthy component to public discourse that was not present five years ago, 10 years ago, 20 years ago. It's not political, but it is, it is a, a manner of engagement that is leading to a disincentive for folks to participate in public service. It's a disincentive for those in the community that want to engage but don't feel comfortable doing so because of how the dynamic has changed. And there are examples all up and down this state and across the country of some of the unfortunate destruction that has occurred that has led to an erosion of democracy in communities, where there instead needs to be a, a balance between open access and public safety and appropriate ability to weigh in on policy, and for all of you and the whole county enterprise that is behind you, to have the confidence that it is done in a both deliberative and safe manner. And that you have the tools locally to reflect the world in 2022, not the world in 1953. locally to reflect the world in 2022, not the world in 1953, because they're two totally different things. And there are great advantages in some of this relative to what we're doing at this immediate moment where we're in the board chambers, but you're also on Zoom, you're also on Facebook. It's, there are unique ways to engage that were never in place in, in most areas prior to the pandemic. And that's, you can't unring that bell. But there needs to be the right tools so that you have, and that you, the broad policymaking family has, is equipped to ensure that the public feels comfortable, public policy is served well, democracy is, is protected, and folks can, can move forward in a deliberative manner and have the difficult, whatever difficult policy conversations that need to happen as part of the, part of the democratic process. So we're going to be spending more time investing in this. Conversations have already begun with the legislature and with the administration around this issue. I, there isn't a solution necessarily, so not bringing a solution, but rather opening, the, the intent is to open a dialogue and to learn what's working, what needs to be updated when we're 70 years, 69 years past when the Brown Act was originally adopted. So that'll be a key focus of ours. And then just finally, last slide, please. Just finally, thank you. Thank you for what you do every day. Thank you to your county administrator who is, she's a helpful cold truth for us. And so if, whether it's something that's needed because you're immersed in a, in a disaster, or it's an issue, a programmatic issue that is impacting the county, Carol does not hesitate to reach out on your behalf to ensure that we know what Lake County needs. It's very helpful for us to have, to have that resource. And so that is, that is awesome and certainly serves you well. I framed this year as a year of optimism, at least I'm trying to. And so I would just say that this is a year of giving grace to others after going through the, the pandemic and also to find ways to make positive progress. And I think we're well-equipped as a county family to be able to do that. And that's in large part to the leadership that you all bring to this role every single day. And so thank you for the opportunity to spend some time with you.
Thank you, Graham, and thank you, Chastity. Any, any questions for, or statements or Supervisor Price?
This could be a heavy side of the dais this year.
You want to balance it out?
You can go first.
Thank you for coming. I know we nodded at each other when you were going through the metal detector. I haven't seen the both of you in person for so long. I didn't even, you've been maskless on my screen every time I'm there and I just did not recognize that. So sorry for not the right introduction when you came into the building. Happy that you're here. The two things that you brought, the EZ Pay that's in my back pocket right now, we have many things that are already in progress over at our tax collector's office. I don't want to add too many things on the plate, but definitely, I think in an area where you have such high poverty, being able to spread it out over the course of many months rather than being hit with one big bill, I think that makes life a lot easier for people when it's hard to plan when you're dealing with a day-to-day. And so I really appreciate those types of programs that are happening. The housing, I know we're working on stuff right now, possibly bringing back a housing authority, whatever we're going to do to position ourselves to be ready for that, we'll be knocking on the door for those things. One of the things that I really appreciate about CSAC, it's, it just, it broadens my understanding of things so much is the legislative updates. I actually now read the government's budget, the governor's budget. It's just, I, there is so much detail and so much better understanding of what's available to us. And I think that CSAC really has opened up the big picture rather than seeing, there's already so much to learn and know and, and find out about Lake County. But Lake County can only be Lake County if we access the things that are available to us outside of Lake County as well. We have to learn where to look. We have to learn what's going on. And CSAC does that. It was a really good introduction using the CSAC New Supervisor Institute. I know that I went there with Supervisor Crandall. Just really put me in a good position to get started in the work that I wanted to get done. And I've really appreciated the tasks, the, the information and the task that I've received from you guys and what to support, what legislation to look at. I know that our previous president, James Gore from Sonoma County, said that in crisis, there's opportunity. That was part of his speech last year. I think there's opportunity whether we are in a crisis or whether good things are happening. I think it's a matter of us finding those opportunities. I am optimistic about 2022 because there's, there's opportunities for 2022 for us to get into a better position so that our community members can have a better quality of life. I decided to step up this year and I joined the Agriculture Committee as well as the Administrative, Administration of Justice Committee. Already received a call from new president Ed Valenzuela and looking forward to get involved. I don't want to ask CSAC to do things for us. I want to be a part of what I'm asking CSAC to do for us because I think that's the most fair way to approach anything and get those things done and accomplished. In the tasks that was presented to the board, I did add in, it wasn't added, but I added in my voice asking for looking at justice reform. And I was glad that soon after, or maybe right before, London Breed was yelling that that is something that's needed. I have a feeling we're going to see some of those movements finally. And I recognize that it's been difficult in the last couple of years because of ballot measures and seeing which way the public is going, which way legislators are going. And for CSAC to spend that level of energy to go against the grain means that you're not putting your energy in things that you could actually accomplish. So I have a feeling that either this year or next year, that some of those things can reswing the pendulum back to where it's more centralized. We don't need to swing it back, but maybe there's going to be some change. So I'm looking forward to all those things and being much more involved and really appreciate what you guys bring and the support that you offer. So thank you so much. Good seeing you.
So I just want to put something on your radar. I know you have, one of your priorities is drought and wildfire. And what we're experiencing now is catastrophic tree mortality again, like we did before in the previous drought. And I don't know if other counties are sounding the alarm yet, but it's something that was not an issue in June. It happened rapidly over the summer. We, you know, we didn't have much of a winter last year. And so that's, the bark beetles, we had multiple swarms per year rather than one swarm. So trees that were damaged and stressed by previous droughts, starting to recover, underlying disease, and then now multiple beetle swarms throughout December, really, when we had still 70-degree weather. So I've, I reached out to CAL FIRE and one of the Napa County supervisors also did a few weeks ago, we did a flyover, we did an aerial survey and waiting on that report. But some of the stands that we examined were already 60% dead. So we have the cold weather now, we have the rain now, but we also have standing fuel now. So we have to figure out how to deal with this. Even if we get the rain that we need this year, this is still an issue. We had trees, they're still dying every day. So putting that on your radar, I'm happy to pass on the reports that I get. Supervisor Simon and I did speak with one of the CAL FIRE captains who dealt with this in the Southern Sierra five years ago. We're going to need help fortifying our communities and our roadways from the tree death. There isn't anything that we can do to stop the tree death, but it is a reality that we're going to have to deal with.
Thank you for raising that. I was not aware that tree mortality is back. That's almost a horrifying thing to hear after how devastating it was with what, 1 million, 2 million trees that had died a number of, several years ago. I'll bring that back to my team. Catherine Freeman on our team is a specialist in this area. She knows it very well. And so I want to make sure that she's got that on her radar. She's immersed in wildfire and drought and other conversations as well. Thank you for raising that.
What's different this time is previously it was just the ponderosas. And now we're seeing it in the knob cones and gray pines, which we hadn't seen before, but they are, they grow in very dense clusters. And I don't know which way you guys are heading through town, but you will see it in my district in Kelseyville. It's on the slopes of Mount Canockdite, it's on either side of the highway. When you go, you'll just see giant swaths of brown. Those are highly combustible trees. They do not have a long lifespan, so it could be drought beetles and coming to the end of their life. But, but it's, it's an insane amount of fuel to have along our highways.
Thank you for that. Supervisor Scott?
Just want to thank you for taking the time to come here today and educating us on what your priorities are. I know for me, working with those that are homeless is a priority of mine. And there's a lot of money coming down and I applaud you for taking that as a priority, trying to figure out who's in charge of what. Because here in Lake County, it probably wasn't until like five years ago that we got organized with our continuum of care and are now starting to bring money in. But we are trying to figure out between the city and the county and, and the state, you know, who's supposed to be doing what. So I really appreciate that that is a priority of yours. And I'm anxious to hear back more from that.
Go ahead, Supervisor Simon.
Thank you for your time today and, and your service. But like we spoke in the beginning, I thought, you know, CSAC was just a viable opportunity for me to be trained as I stepped into this role as supervisor. I went to the, what's it called, the rookie training, I will call it, to the training camp. And I really appreciated that opportunity to sit with the other supervisors that were elected of the other 58 counties and understand the process of, you know, the local government and how we should be operating as supervisors. So I just want to say thank you very much. I know that the institute here in Lake County that Carol has pushed hard to get us approved here at the board is working excellent. We offer that, as you said, to our employees for that educational support as they want to move forward and directors here, and it's working great. I think we just had some recent discussions about directors, making sure that they know these opportunities are here for them, to help them support our community and our constituents. So greatly appreciated. I think the list of priorities is good. You know, you can always add them, just as the tree death mortality situation we have going on here, but also mental health issues and focusing on our elders and our, and our children, you know, as always. So, and the equity, you know, and inclusion of all folks. As you know, today you sat here with two tribal representatives. I think the only one in the state of California out of 58 that has two or ever has had two are representing the indigenous people that are from this land. There are 110 recognized tribes, there's 58 counties, and collaboration and communication, you know, with inclusion of all races is the most important thing. When I sit here and make decisions, I always try and do that. The folks that get to come to these meetings are usually the more well-off folks. And when we make decisions, it's about the single mothers that are struggling to make payments throughout the month and the folks that really need that representation. We're only as strong as our weakest link. And I really appreciate the communication and cooperation with CSAC. And we'll keep bringing it. In 2015, the valley fire happened. I know the North Bay Fire is what really got people into that mood to, to help. But here, we experienced it, we went through it. We were, I hate to say it, but kind of the training ground of how you move forward with this. I know a lot of stuff is really improved, but we need to continue on that. And also remember that in 2015, Lake County, we're still recovering, less than probably 25% on the rebuild in our areas for the valley fire. And, you know, we don't even go into the other 13 disasters that have happened here. And we just will continue to have that focus. I know our C E O, Carol, and all of our directors make sure that our, our needs are, are, are out there and understanding it. So we'll continue to do that and work for you guys. So greatly appreciated and everything. And 2022 is going to be a good year. We're gonna, we're gonna make this a positive one.
We shall make it so together.
And I'd just like to highlight how important it is to have these trainings that our staff are going through. I really am glad we're doing that. I'm glad we're a part of sending our staff to not only just be trained in some of their expertises, but also to network with other counties where they can actually, you know, give that, that insight and that advice that, yeah, we've done that before, but this is what will happen. So work it this way or to your advantage. And a lot of the counties are doing very similar things, but just kind of twerking it to where it works for them. Also, a lot of things that I thought I had pinned, I needed, I'm glad I went because I wasn't, especially even with the heavily discussed diversity, equity, inclusion. There's a lot of things I really wasn't aware of that I was pre, you know, just already thinking, not even thinking I was doing subconsciously. So a lot of these trainings are just so important. I'm glad that you provide it. I'm glad we are, we are having our staff. As a board, we ensure that they go to that. And so again, thank you for coming, giving us your time and, and working with us so collaboratively.
Thank you all very much. Happy New Year.
With that, I'll open it to the public. I know that I haven't had a chance to do that yet. And so if there's, I don't see anybody on Zoom, anybody in the chambers? And nope, we'll bring it back to the board and we'll go ahead since this is informational item, we'll close this item. Thank you very much and travel safe. And we will move on to our next agenda item. And so our, it looks like our last, well, our next item is the Supervisors Weekly Calendars and Travel Reports. And I'll start from District Five.
Okay. Tomorrow morning, I have the T I D. And it looks like I'm going to be catching up on quite a few things in the afternoon. And Thursday, Geo, Geozone Discussion with Sonoma Clean Power. Friday, I have a weekly meeting with CAL O E S and CAL FIRE and N C O. I'm going to be touring with Clerk and Will Evans on the priority projects in my district in the afternoon. And then the California Women in Ag, very exciting. Their state convention is being held in our county, in Lake County. So we're very, very proud of that. And Friday evening, we'll be having a welcome mixer, welcoming representatives from all over the state to beautiful Lake County. They're going to have their convention all weekend through Sunday. They're staying at Canockdite Vista. And everyone's very proud and excited for this big moment. Monday, I'm having my meeting with Carol. I don't think I have anything over the weekend. And then we're also having our AmeriCorps Support Organization meeting, which is very exciting to have AmeriCorps teams coming back to Lake County and then back here Tuesday. And then Tuesday evening for the special board meeting.
All right. Thank you. Supervisor Sabatier?
Yeah, so tomorrow, starting off the day with an A P C L T A meeting.
I thought we got a cancellation on.
Was that a cancellation?
Yeah, I think, I think January's meeting is canceled.
Okay. Appreciate that. Hadn't looked at that yet.
Yeah, I think she sent it over the holidays that it was canceled.
All right. Then I have a, I unfortunately made a conflicting situation for myself. I had a remote work policy meeting and then now have a meeting with all of the fire chiefs to discuss our inter-facility transfers. So I'm going to be going to the meeting with all the fire chiefs and invited C E O Hutchinson to be part of the conversation as well so we can get a little bit further insight onto how to solve that. Then I have a meeting with after the fire to discuss a conversation we'll be having with FEMA. And later on, I will be joining the Clear Lake City Council meeting to listen in on their business. Right now, Friday seems to be empty. Coming back on the 10th, we did have to postpone our Middle Creek Restoration Project Committee from this Monday, the 3rd to the 10th on Monday, the 10th. And so we'll have that meeting then, meeting with C E O Hutchinson. And I got something here at 4:00 P M. I will be joining the Latinos United meeting and then a pegboard meeting later on in the evening. And it looks like it's in the city of Clear Lake, which puts a smile on my face because it's easier for me to access. And then coming back here for our meeting on Tuesday, as well as the one in the evening between Lake Port and the county. That's it for me.
Thank you. Supervisor Simon?
All right, just finishing up the board meeting today, this afternoon, I've got some biannual trainings I've got to get completed. So I'll spend a couple hours after the meeting today in the office. We had the L T A and A P C meeting, but I did, there is a cancellation on, on that. We've got to have an executive team meeting on the renewable energy and that won't happen until later on in the month. So I think that's the reason we, we have pushed that meeting on. Don't have anything on Thursday. Friday, have in the morning at 10:00 A M, our planning meeting with CAL O E S, talk about the project coming in on Monday, I have a meeting with Carol. Carol, probably only going to have about 30 minutes on Monday. I've got a Blue Zone meeting I said I could participate in at 10:00 A M. So I'll make sure to be on there right at 9:30 to go over that. And then later on that afternoon. And then later on that afternoon, the AmeriCorps support. It is great that we've got that grant, that we have the AmeriCorps team coming in. They are going to be, at least beginning stationed down in the, in the building at Central Park. Thank the Central Park for their cooperation with that. I know we're working through everything, but we're getting it going. So I'm excited about to have those AmeriCorps teams here to do, hopefully, vegetation abatement, community help. They've just been phenomenal since the Valley Fires they've come through. So a great program that we brought here in Lake County. And then back here on Tuesday for the board meeting on the 11th. And then in the evening, we have the City of Lakeport and County meeting for the annexation.
Hey, thank you Supervisor Simon.
Which is a big meeting, 25 years, 20 years.
Oh, I think it's more than 25 years.
I'm not sure, but I know I've heard those terms thrown around.
Supervisor Scott?
Tomorrow, I have a gender review and then the Community Vision Forum meeting at 6 o'clock that evening. Are we still going to do the remote work policy meeting at 9:30 on Thursday?
I didn't have that one.
Lake County, let's see, GeoZone meeting at 1:00 PM and then Continuum of Care at 3:00. On Friday, I will be attending the Women of Ag Conference. I'm going to be on the tour in the morning and then also doing the meet and greet that evening. And then also doing Saturday, the tour, and then the dinner that evening. And then Monday, 9 o'clock, meeting to talk about our workshop, the Board of Supervisors. And then back here on Tuesday.
Thank you, Vice Chair Scott. Sorry about that. I, I called you supervisor, but you were the vice chair. So I'll make sure to emphasize that from here forward. Okay, so my agenda as follows. Tomorrow, we have gender review at 9:00 AM. Have the Earth Committee meeting at 4:00 PM at the Moose Lodge. And we'll be providing a Zoom meeting as well in tandem with that. In between that, I'll be, be a part of the Community Visioning Forum. And then the, over to the CSA II in Spurring Valley. Thursday, I have the AR 6330 UL Safer Project Team Meeting that I'll be trying to attend for, for some folks in Upper Lake. And also attend Special Ad Hoc Advisory on Wildfire and Forest. Friday, I have some meetings with constituents in District Three. Monday, 8:45, I have a meeting with CAO Hutchinson, 10:30, Middle Creek Restoration. And then back here Tuesday for both of our meetings, our special and our, our weekly meeting as well. And so with that, there's nothing else to add. We'll move forward and go to our closed session item and finish the day off with that. Our closed session, 8.1, is public employee appointment pursuant to Government Code Section 54957B1, Appointment of Public Health Officer. And with that, we will, we will go into closed session. Thank you.
Yes, Mr. Chair, we're going to go into closed session immediately. Sam is going to step out and, and then he'll come back and shut down his booth later. But Matthew can go ahead and terminate the Zoom because we won't be returning to the Zoom.
And thank you, Matthew, for your help and Sam, of course, as well.
All right.